If I hear one, if I hear a, if I hear a tone of step up, I might pass out on that. Hey, reminder, the microphones are at the table to catch ambient sound and we are recording in the back so that we can later upload this to our website as we do with all of our functions of the board. I do want to remind folks that if you're comfortable and would like to grab the microphone when you're giving your comments, feel free to do that. But just if you could find that they are generally in your, in your front area so that we can capture your vocalizations to tape, that would be very helpful. We do have the podium here with a, with a microphone, as you can see, that I'm using right now. And our presenters will certainly be able to utilize that. So again, thanks for everyone to be here. I will turn it over now to Dr. Buck and our superintendent, Dr. Lavett, for opening remarks.
Good afternoon, everybody. Seems like just a few weeks ago that we were in this room and Ms. Hines pointed out to me that y'all sang "Happy Birthday" to me the last time we were here. It's not my birthday again, but it's been several months, so I want to welcome everybody here today. As usual, we try to get together periodically to do talking and planning and continue to work for all of the children of Chatham County. And today is a special day for us because we have two newcomers to the board that will be in office in January. I think you all know them, but I'm just going to ask Roger Moss, who's president-elect, to stand so you can see him, and also Reverend Paul Smith, who is taking Ms. Hines's district. I have asked them to not just observe, but to play, you know, to literally be participants in this two days together because it's important, obviously, that you, we all, you all, start to work together and get to know each other well so you can get things done. We have lots of things facing us that we need to talk about in these two days. If you've kept up with things, as I know you have, across the country, teacher retention is a problem, but even a bigger problem is just finding teachers, period. And we'll talk about that some today. Academic achievement for our students is important for us. One of the big news items for us this fall has been the Acon Academy with the little ones and what that potentially can mean for the future of this district as we get these little ones at age three and start teaching them to read to make up for that million-dollar, uh, million-dollar, million-word deficit. And so all of those, those are just some of the things. As usual, we have some ESPLAS issues, we have some charter issues, we have several other things that we'll be probably discussing as they come out in small groups. But I welcome you all here. It continues to have been my great honor and pleasure to be a part of the Board of Savannah-Chatham Board of Public Education, but likewise to be a part of the staff under the leadership of the superintendent. And so have a great two days together. You know me, and actually, I'll tell you a story on Roger Moss because I told him as we were, as we were meeting one time, I said, "I believe if you take yourself too seriously, you get in trouble." And I said, "You'll find that I make really, really boring and not very funny jokes." And he said, "I've heard that about you." So, but I've always tried to make us stay a little bit a notch above too serious because it's important to laugh at ourselves and, and to enjoy each other. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Good afternoon, everyone. We are excited to see you and we look forward to this time of the year that we get an opportunity to come together and enjoy each other and also to learn a little bit more. As we see it, it's an opportunity to discuss perhaps some ideas or some thoughts or to explore some issues that we don't necessarily have the opportunity to do during regular meeting times. Those meeting times seem long, but sometimes we just never have enough time. We have, if you'll join me in thanking the team that organized us all, they did a great We also thank you for contributing the ideas for, for the retreat today. I think the only thing that we're not covering is the purchase of the Savannah Mall. Someone said that they thought we, as a retreat topic, we should talk about purchasing the Savannah Mall, and I can assure you that we did not do that. So, and it has been...
He didn't like me, though, was he?
It's my understanding from very close and informed sources that this is the third time that it's been sold. And so we, of course, we were really worried about whether we were going to be able to go there in January. What I find really interesting is that this is the third time it's been sold, but this is the one time we're all talking about it. So it's kind of like things that we do. Like, we do a lot of stuff and then all of a sudden it pops up and there's a lot of conversation. We are excited about the retreat objectives and you'll see those at your table. We are doing, we're having some really, I think, healthy conversations about those things that are really important to us all. Definitely looking at personnel, talent development and professional growth, always looking at goal three, looking at, of course, staff retention. And of course, we're very fortunate to have with us today Mrs. Goldman, who is going to personally ta-talk with us about the teacher burnout report. And Mr. Ray will also continue the conversation about staff recruitment and retention. We will continue to have the conversation about enrollment. So Mr. Jackson will share that with us because it has an impact on also long-range facilities planning. Probably key to this conversation will also be looking at student achievement, as always what we're concerned about, and making sure that we have a collective understanding of the district's early childhood education efforts and outcomes. And specifically, you'll see what we see as our theory of change in terms of making our contributions to increasing student achievement at the early ages, and then hopefully inviting our community partners to recognize what their role is in terms of improving student achievement as well. So we're looking forward to a great day and a half. The agenda today includes, of course, Mrs. Goldman, Mr. Ray, and then we'll have an opportunity to have a discussion about their presentations, and then we'll move on from there to looking at a day in the life of our students. So Mrs. Droth, who is our program manager for early childhood, will join us, and Benikini Frazier, you are acquainted with her, 2015 Teacher of the Year, she'll be here to talk with us about our, how we manage those early learners and the differences that we encounter with them. We'll have a kind of wrap-up of the day, a little peek into what we're going to be doing tomorrow, and we think it will be a very productive day. Now, here was the edict given to us. "We talk a little, you talk a lot." That's it. So we're going to share information with you and then, of course, encourage you to give us some information or give us some feedback that will allow us to look at the policy approaches and then look at the strategies for improvement in these areas. So we think it's a great design and we're looking forward to full participation. So here's some other important information. The necessaries, if you haven't been in the building, I think most of us have, the important spaces in the building are just around the corner. I think right beyond this wall here are the restrooms, and we're encouraging you to continue to engage in our meal that's been provided for us, and I think that will offer us a great start to this experience. You also have homework, or actually, pre-work. We invited you to engage in an activity that will help us understand two important things, well, three important things, and we're going to ask you to just report on one of them. So just to make sure we know everyone that's in the room, you have a homework, well, you had a pre-work assignment. We gave you three options. We asked you for three pieces of information. We're going to ask you to stand up, share your name, and then share with us in 30 seconds or less the answer to one of the questions on that sheet. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Bernadette Ball Oliver to start. She is, because I know she did her homework. She will stand up, she'll introduce herself, she will tell us, she'll repeat her name, her role, and then she will tell you one, the answer to one of those questions, and then she will call on the next person until we get it all done. Bernadette, a great model, let's, let's get it.
Good afternoon, Bernadette Ball Oliver, Interim Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. And just like she did when we were in the classroom, I knew she was going to call on me, she was really good. So the one thing, practice already meant that excited me as a child about the start of the new school year, I probably would have been one of these administratively placed children. I lived in the Jenkins District, but I went to Beach High School, so I was always glad to go back to band practice because I was on the drill team, got to see my friends, so that was always what excited me when it was time to get on to daily practice. So I am going to call on Ms. Cornelia Hall.
Oh, you didn't look at it, you just called. Cornelia Hall, school board, proud school board member of District Three. I chose record the name of one of your favorite teachers in grade or content area, and I chose my 11th grade American history teacher, Ms. Solow, because she was so smart and she knew history so well, and she made you enjoy it because you could see how much she enjoyed it. And I ended up making that my major in college because of her. And I'm going to call on David Brigham.
David Brigham, District Six Rep. I will follow in this Hall's answering of one of my favorite teachers, and it was hard, but some of you know him as Coach, I know him as Mr. Lambert. He was my chemistry teacher, I believe, in 10th grade, and I probably could write down 10 words that described him, but dedication was the one that I decided to use. Dedicated to his school, his students, his profession. I still have awards that he made, and his work, his work, he had a wood workshop, and that was one of his things, carpentry was one of his loves, and I still have awards that he made me, and he made for every single chapter, for every single nine weeks, and that just was above and beyond what anybody needed to do, and I know that we have that many dedicated teachers today as well.
I also wrote about my favorite teacher, who was Ms. Meisner, my second-grade teacher. I integrated a school in 1965 in a small town called Perry, Florida, and I had a horrible experience. I repeated first grade, I was enrolled in speech, she had a very difficult time, so when I got promoted finally to the second grade, Ms. Meisner showed me love, and she didn't judge me by the color of my skin. And every day she would say to me, "Tanya, when you go to college..." Now, I didn't know what college was, but I knew I was going because Ms. Meisner said that I was going. So on the back of my report card, at the end of the year, she said, "Be a fine third grader, be the best." Fifteen years later, I became a second-grade teacher, and on the back of everybody's report card, I remember what she put on the back of my report card, and I said, "Be a fine third grader, be the best."
Who are you calling on?
I'm calling on, I'm picking on Paul Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Good afternoon, my name is Paul Smith, I am the fifth district school board member elect. I'm very glad to be here. The question that I went with was the one thing that excited me about the 2022-2023 school board, uh, school year, and that would be complication 5600. I thought it was an amazing time, the energy was great, seeing the workers and seeing everyone get excited about the new school year was electrifying, to say the least. Thank you. And I'm going to pick on Ms. Irene Hines.
Hello, everyone, my name is Irene Hines. I am almost an 18-year representative of the school board, District Five, and I am happy. But nevertheless, I exceedingly a lot of classes choosing educators, and I'm following suit of many. My 10th-grade biology teacher, Mr. June Stevens, was that teacher, and he excited me and others about biology, and yes, that's what I majored when I went to college, and that was my career. And I have a love for children, and don't ask me what to do with that, but anyway, I love the children, but I plan to continue to maybe, maybe work with little ones and get them to appreciate nature, biology. Thank you very much. Oh, and who do I call?
It's interesting because in my old town, you know, I was one of a, it was a huge, huge town and a huge, huge school, and there were 22 people in the graduating class. And so you always stand out. I was one of two to go to college, actually. But I didn't choose a teacher because the second question was what was exciting about first day of school and going back to school. And my excitement about going back to school as a kid was I always got a new shirt. And we didn't have uniforms then, and that's probably one of the reasons I've always been for uniforms, because it takes away the kids that seem to have from those who have not. And so I made sure that my two always had a new shirt when they got ready to wear.
Who are you calling on?
I'm going to call Denise.
See, you're about to make me cry, then you may call. So I am going to go with, so Denise Kradowski, District One Representative, and I have to go with teacher. See, I'm going to cry on my teacher. So her name was Mrs. Vandenberg, and she was my teacher in second grade, and she, I, see, y'all didn't follow directions and says, "Name your one word." Not one word for her was curiosity. She inspired us to always be curious, and she would take us out to explore nature, so big surprise, right? And with her was the first time I ever saw a walking stick or a praying mantis. And she just always was, she was so, and she was about this tall, and she was probably 80 years old, but she was the sweetest thing. We had to, we had to move during my second grade year, and y'all, I cried because I had to leave Mrs. Vandenberg. And when we got to our new place and I got settled in my new school, I wrote her a letter about everything that we were doing, and I'm a perfectionist, and I never thought the letter was good enough to send. But she was making. All right, I'm going to call on Mr. Jackson.
Larry Jackson, Chief National Officer, and approaching 29 years in the distance. I'm just putting that out there.
Three years old.
That's one thing that excited me as a child, probably from high school, I myself was a band student, so that, that exciting thing during the summer was looking forward to band camp because I was from one of those small cities where mostly, most of my friends were in the band, so at the end of the summer, we knew band camp was coming up, and like I said, it's a small city, but we were marching, 300 or 400 kids in the band, so all of my friends were in the band. So everyone I saw at band camp, well, the people I wanted to see at school. I didn't care about anybody else, because once I got to band camp. But that's my, one thing I look forward to, band camp during the summer, at the end of summer. And, hmm, Dave, nice to meet you. All right, Dave, Police Seattle, Chief Strategic and Performance Officer. So looking at this, I kind of skipped my childhood education because that was rough. I was in Brooklyn, New York in the ghetto. I'm just happy I survived. So focus on, we'll focus on this school year. One of the things that I can say that's very exciting is when you see those kindergarten kids coming in and then you see the parents, all with their iPhones out, basically a little kid. You know, before the kids wouldn't want to come in, now they're just running in, and the parents are like, "It's certainly a delight." Every year we get a new batch of kids, every year we graduate a new class, and it's exciting to see that transition through our system.
Who are you calling on?
Oh, let's see, Vanessa Miller-Kegler.
Dr. Austin, I was thinking about, Dr., but I didn't put anything on here, I was just thinking about. We were having a conversation earlier about students, so what I was thinking about, but it never ended up on paper. But seeing this, man, it was hard between my college professor, Dr. Walton, and Barbara Mobley, who was my first-grade teacher. For those of you who've been in education and lived in Savannah, I took a high elementary school, and Barbara Mobley lived across the street from me, driving school. So Ms. Mobley was entrenched in the community, she taught off six of us in the first grade. And in 2016, I had, needed a replacement, I was in the post office, and I was two or three people ahead of her, and she moved me from behind. And she said, "I hope that you still continue to do right by your mother because your mother raised six amazing children." And I turned around and said, "In the world." And it was Barbara Mobley, my first-grade teacher, who I never forgot, and always loved and respected, who went on to become a principal, but she and Dr. Walton both had those footprints that they left of Barbara Mobley as a Savannahian and as a first-grade teacher, and I got to become a principal. But she still knew most of her students by their, she knew me from me. But, so, and she was amazing, that's the wonderful about it.
All right, and so who are you calling on? Who are you passing off to?
The people got their heads down for a few years. Mr. Johnson, Michael Johnson.
Hey, everyone, Michael Johnson, District Seven Representative. I'm going to go with what excited me as a child starting school. I was always, just to go back, I was always advanced in math, I was at least one or two grades ahead of where I was supposed to be. So my, what I always liked to do is find out, one, if I still was the youngest in the class, and two, by how much. And I remembered in the year I moved here, in the middle of my eighth-grade year, coming from APS to St. Andrews, I found out that I was two years younger than the next youngest person. So I was in eighth grade taking classes with 10th graders. That's what I always loved about starting back at school, figuring out how much younger than everybody else I was. And it's kind of interesting because in most organizations that I've been part of, I'm still the youngest one, so. When did you graduate?
I'm the youngest one here.
I'm going to pass on to Sean.
Sean Katto, Department of District Four. I'm going with something exciting about this school year. We were all at my house, my daughter had some friends over, and I heard them start talking about, "Who'd you get for social studies? When is lunch? And do you have band, and what's your special?" And like, three or four, three or four kids, all excited about starting high school, all excited about the new school, all excited about the new school year. Beginning of the school year is like a clean slate, we're starting fresh, we've got the whole year ahead of us. That's this time of year when they start getting like that really reminds me and grounds me about why I'm here and why I'm doing this, and it's the same thing with graduation. We all talk a lot about how graduation is such a fulfilling experience for us because it reminds us why we're here. So my favorite thing was watching my now freshman in high school daughter excited about the new school year and talking about it with her friends. We must be doing something right, right? The kids want to come back.
Who are you passing off to?
The Voice. So I'm going to answer all three questions in 30 seconds or less.
Yeah, what happened?
Mrs. Morrow, high-top shoes and Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. I'll tell you about the first one. So Ms. Morrow was my first-grade teacher in the wonderful Jefferson County Public School System of the Punxsutawney Area Schools in the beautiful Mary A. Wilson Elementary School. And when it came time to pick a president for your first-grade teacher, I, I just, she was, I still think about her because she was so nice to me. I don't know, it's the way she treated me is what it was. Can't really think of anything ultimately specific, but she made me feel valued and important to be there, and I wanted to buy her a dress for her birthday. All the other kids were getting apples and little things, and my mom, I could be around chasing her wherever it was. You can't get her a dress. So we got, I got her lots of pencils and stuff. But I still think about Mrs. Morrow and it's how she treated me from that experience. And then I got to explain Twinkle Twinkle Little Star, you heard us play it in the board reading. Is it 33? That, that, Dr. Haiti, it didn't take her but a second to open up her personality, and I got Twinkle Twinkle Little Star out of her because I asked her how high she could count. She said she could count 10, so I went, "Let's go to five." And right after five, that song came out. So let's see, I'd like to hear the next, I'm interested in what life was like in a one-room schoolhouse, so I'm picking Lee Holiday.
Actually, not one-room, this is Lee Holiday, I'm the school board attorney, been that for 38 years, 50 years, power of law and committee. Seems like 100. No, I went to Jacob G. Smith, I had many, many, many teachers who I could name and who were great to me, Lee Holiday. And actually, Saxon Bardrum was my principal. I had to go to the principal because I rode the bike through the school. Anyway, I went to Wilder, where the kids were wilder. It's now gone.
It's done.
But my favorite teacher was Beulah Harper, who taught me at Savannah High School, English. And because of her, I was able to, and Mr. Vaughn taught me calculus, I was able to go to Georgia Tech, got out of there, went to law school, and I could write. And Ms. Harper was the one who taught me to write. We had a thing every week, you had to write a paper, and you had to turn it in, and she was ruthless. Any error was there, but what that taught me was, that was an error, don't make it again. So eventually I got papers that were half written. It's pretty good, she's a great teacher. And I think her favorite, my favorite quote from her was when she walked in one day, and I was sitting in class, and she said, "Mr. Holiday, would you take your batos off the desk?" And I did, and I was sufficiently chasing at that point. She also did the word thing, where basically every week we had to learn 30 new words. You have to realize when this was, this was a long time ago, this was before current, but that was important to her, and so she was a great instructor, really good, a good family friend, actually. So I could go on with other things about the happy parts about going to school and things like that, but I think that really sums it up. And let's see, who has it to call? Roger?
Yes, my wife.
Yes, I was.
Hi, everyone, my name's Roger Moss, and starting in January, I'll be your school board president. Mine is my favorite teacher. And it's my first grade teacher. And the word for her was persistent. And she had this motto that we began every school year with. And what's amazing is that I still remember it. And the motto was, "Good, Better, Best. Never let it rest until your good is better and you're better best." And that set the tone for the year in our classroom. And she was, she never let us settle. She was so persistent. And she's probably the best influence in my life.
Can you email that motto? Oh, yes, um, Deion.
Hi, Deion, House Coach Brown, District Two, and I chose my favorite teacher. Uh, my favorite teacher was Virginia Edwards from Gould Elementary School, nineteen eighty-two. And the word for her is stern. And, okay, I don't know this person. Okay, all right. So, I loved her because she was so stern, and she really believed in what we could do, which was important to me at that time because our fifth grade teacher was really phenomenally racist. And, and we knew it. We knew it as children, and Dr. Lavette has a story that she can tell you at another time about me just getting fed up with that and just walking out of the classroom and having a janitor have to perform some mediation to get me to go back in with this teacher who I won't be. But it was Ms. Edwards who was the gifted teacher for sixth grade, who got all of us kids who had been impacted by this really racist fifth grade gifted teacher, who, I don't know what her thoughts were. But Ms. Edwards believed in us, she took no mess, um, and she expected excellence. And we all became revitalized by this expectation that we knew we were meant for, but that we had been kind of taken off track from by our experience with previous year. And my person, um, have we already heard from the girls?
No.
Mr. Ray?
All right, um, Ramon Ray, Chief Human Resources Officer. Um, and I will, um, I don't want to alarm everybody, but I have to tag on to Mrs. Jackson on next Tuesday, will be twenty-nine years. And September first, I'll be in the retirement.
That's what excites me about this school.
He's already filled out all the papers, he's gotta sign and pay.
Uh, I, I, I think it's a village, um, I'm, I'm focused on the teacher, but it does take a village listening to Dr. Oscar Brown. Yes, that was helped me tutoring, and that was just amazing. And also, you know, just everybody in high school, as high as included. There was one teacher that was outside of class, though. Um, name was Brenda Stevens, she passed several years ago. It wasn't what happened in school. I was a medium student, I had to make it real complete. But it was like after school. It was called Vocational Clubs of America, CTA. I actually rose to be president, and that was just something. And she was just so encouraging. That was the word I would have for her. She encouraged me all four years I was in high school. Probably may, maybe not with all the support, you were on your own, but she is the one teacher, because of the extra, extracurricular side, that was so important to me that I didn't know, didn't have any clue about. So, I'd have to go with Brenda Stevens as my, um, teacher that had most of the group.
And he was quiet, he didn't talk.
I'm so excited. I'm going to go to Dr. Henderson.
Okay, so, English, you know, we have a depravity of words for love, we just gotta have love. So, I think tough love is a word because it means, I mean, stern is a word, but it really is tough love. And I think I had a teacher named Ann Wodley, and she passed away, I think about eight days ago. And it was amazing to see all of the comments on Facebook, and they all remembered her the same way. Just someone that just demanded way more than any teacher you'd run into yet, but managed to get it. And you know those teachers just set the tone early on, like, there's not gonna, this is not gonna be a fun house. You know, this is gonna be serious, and I'm demanding a lot of you. And it was really, I guess, the first time I was in a class where it wasn't just like, "Hey, that's great, you're, you're good at math," or "You're good at something." It was like, "No, you, you can do better." And it was, you know, it was, uh, but everyone, after they got to the end, just loved her across the board. And it was, it was really remarkable to see the immaturity of all the people just with the same stories about somebody. But she was born in nineteen twenty-seven and just passed away, so. Oh, yes. And I, I always remember as Ms. Dennis, it's kinda like Dennis.
I'm six, I'm six months into Goldman, and around school, the kids are still Ms. Dennis, and I'm still calling myself Ms. Dennis. Transitioning. Um, so, my, so my favorite teacher, um, was Ms. Jessica Good, and she was my eighth grade English teacher. And the word that I have for her is advocate. Um, the eighth grade can be just so brutal, um, you're so self-conscious, you're so insecure. And she was such a safe place to share and to just be. And she taught us how to write. And when I'm talking about writing, I'm not just talking about organization and structure and stuff like that. She just, she taught us to find our voice because she believed in it and she wanted to hear it. And she just made you feel like that your voice was so important to her. And so, I just really appreciated that advocate that I had in Jessica Good.
Well, let's give everybody a big round of applause.
I would say, I might hurt, but I can do it in thirty seconds or less. The most exciting part of this school year was, um, Little Acorn. Just because it's great to see three-year-olds just growing and so excited about school. And then, um, Ms. Mrs. Anita C. Reed was my favorite teacher, sixth grade. Wonderful writer and just gave us like, like, uh, least teacher, just had us writing every day. And it was just wonderful, and that is why I love writing. Because every time I write something, I think about her. And her lessons and her just saying, "This is how you communicate with the world. You leave your thoughts in writing." So, yeah, let's give everybody a big round of applause. Um, with that, I just want to just remind you of the many wonderful teachers that we have making a difference in the lives of our children every day. And, you know, part of our job last year particularly, we started paying more attention to wellness and working with our teachers so that they would stay motivated in a very, very tough time. I would also advance the position that all of them, all of our employees have really had a very tough time, staying focused, but they've done excellent work. Today, we are very fortunate to, um, have our very own, um, Mrs. Goldman to talk with us about a, a report that she was a chief architect of. And she definitely, her voice comes through, um, in, in that. She ably represented, uh, teachers all across the state. We're so proud to have her right here with us today to talk to you about the teacher burnout report. She's gonna do that, as well as Mr. Ray's going to share some information with you on, uh, Goldman Reed, share his support for being part of that. We're looking forward to hearing both of them in a second. Is that supposed to do something else for today? Oh. So, you wanna do this piece? I'm gonna do this part.
Oh, the guiding principles?
Yes. Thank you for asking. Um, so, thank you, this is why you have a good team. Of course, you are familiar with our mission and our vision, and certainly, the guiding principles of the school board clearly are laid out in our strategic plan and in all of our communications. Definitely, we want to just remind everyone that we are expecting to work, to continue to work together as a team to ensure that we're providing the highest level of experiences for our students and also for our staff. And so, today, we'll focus a lot on them. You will see here that the school board does provide governance, establishes policies, and evaluates the superintendent while providing autonomy for meeting established goals and for managing day-to-day operations. All students' academic and personal achievements will be at levels that will enable them to be fully productive citizens beyond graduation, much like many of us who are in this room who are graduates, very proud graduates of Savannah County Public Schools. It is a shared partnership among home, school, and community. We believe that. And hopefully, over these two days, you will hear more and more what we're doing, but also how we can, as a group, involve our communities so that we have collective responsibility for the outcomes. A safe, secure, healthy, and positive environment is essential for the education of all, meaning all of our students as well as our staff. And the commitment to equitable allocation of resources is essential for students to grow, to, uh, learn, and to achieve their highest levels. Physical responsibility, of course, and accountability and stewardship must be maintained to ensure equitable allocation of resources. We're in a good financial position. We never fail to let people know that we're in a good financial position, but we're also looking at how we allocate our resources to ensure that all students have an opportunity to be successful. And then, of course, as you witnessed in this room from the time you came in, uh, until this very moment, positive relationships with all stakeholders. And I would add, within this group particularly, are built through a culture of diversity, equity, inclusion, respect, and transparency. Those are our guiding principles, which were adopted, of course, along with the adoption of The Way Forward for 2026, our strategic plan. We're very proud of that work. We had at least, at least two hundred people to say it was good. And the board adopted it, and I believe that it will stand the test of all time. So, with that, I'm gonna invite, um, Mrs. Goldman to come up and talk with us about, um, seizing the moment and making sure that we're paying attention to the needs of our teachers and I would say, our staff. Let's give her a big round of applause.
So, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm, I'm so excited to be able to share this with you all. Um, looking back, as it was just mentioned a moment ago, I think we've had quite a time of it in education for the past couple of years. And I think heart-wrenching and tumultuous would not be misplaced adjectives for this era. Um, and in my role as Georgia Teacher of the Year, I had a window into many different worlds through my travels. So, I recognize that those extremes are, may not have been the case for everyone, but I'm pretty confident that most, if not all of you, would agree with me that it has overwhelmingly been the case for many of our colleagues. So, um, it is so easy for us to step into this mindset that everything will be just wonderful if we can just put all that stuff behind us, right? Like, almost like it never happened. But if we really think about it, we can't truly put the past two years, or any school year for that matter, in the rearview mirror, and nor should we. Because each year of education is not like a book that you just read it and you close it and you just file it on the shelf. Each year builds on the next, it informs the next. A year prior or a series of years prior reveal for us the successes that we need to build on, the directions that we need to take, and the challenges that are ahead of us. And we know that knowledge, past and present, is power. So, with knowledge as power, that means that our circumstances, past and present, are power too because of how much knowledge we do gain from those circumstances, even the terrible ones. So, when we find ourselves in trying times, in challenging times, do we make the choice to remain captive to our roadblocks? Or do we find the courage to seize the moment? To view the challenge as an opportunity to reclaim our path or to define our direction, to redefine our direction? At the, at the culmination of my tenure as Georgia Teacher of the Year in June, we released a ta, our, we, we had a task force and we released our report on teacher burnout. And what I've asked everyone to whom I've presented it to date is to seize the moment. As a district board, where do I, where do I aim? Just so I know that it, right here? There we go. Okay. Um, as a district board, you are, um, and, and district leaders, you are some of the people who collectively have the expertise and the influence, the courage, and the passion, and the love to seize this moment that we are in for creating an environment in education where everyone, students, teachers, staff, administrators, superintendents, everyone thrives. An environment that connects everyone to the shared dream that we all have of what education should be and could be. We can't change how we got here, but we can change how we go forward. And that begins with understanding what is happening to move forward, to lay found, the foundation for the positive momentum that we want to build and for a united strategic response. We first need a collective understanding of what burnout is and what its root causes are. Uh, burnout is actually not just metaphorical jargon. It has an official definition with the World Health Organization. And that is, "A syndrome conceptualized as resulting from chronic workplace stress that has not been successfully managed. And it presents as feelings of energy depletion or exhaustion, increased mental distance from one's job, or feelings of negativism or cynicism related to one's job, and reduced professional efficacy." And that sounds like so many teachers that I know and that I have met and that I'm gonna be so bold as to say that you all know and that you have, have spoken with. And depleted and exhausted, mentally distant, negative, cynical, and ineffective, those are not the kind of teachers that we want our teachers to be. Those are not the kind of teachers that our students and our families and our community partners want our teachers to be. And those are not the kind of teachers that our teachers want to be. The importance of sharing the fact that there is an official definition for burnout is not just found in the fact that there is a definition, but rather, its importance is also found in the fact that the definition establishes that it's an organizational problem that requires an organizational solution. It is beyond the employees themselves as individuals. The cure for burnout requires organizational proactivity, not reactivity. It requires intentional preventative measures and strategies implemented by organizations to avert the burnout to begin with. Desmond Tutu said it best, "We need to stop just pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find out why they are falling in." Um, I'm grateful to one of the task force members named Rebecca Carlisle from Gwinnett County for sharing this book with me. I have it right here. Um, this is, and, and as, uh, as our group began our work, uh, peeling this issue apart, uh, this book was very, uh, was, was fascinating. It was very, um, instrumental for us. It was published towards the end of last year. And in it, the author, Jennifer Moss, explains that preventative measures and strategies that organizations take need to address what have been identified by research as the six main causes of burnout. So, we would call these six causes the reasons why they're falling in the river. They would be workload, perceived lack of control, lack of reward or recognition, poor relationships, lack of fairness, and a values mismatch. And very clearly, all six of these causes speak to workplace culture. Taken collectively, the six causes of burnout manifest debilitating, demoralizing feelings of irrelevance and incompatibility. And when I think about the teachers who shared with me about their personal experience with burnout or why they're leaving the profession, unfortunately, I can hear voices representing every one of these six causes as they share about their organizational stressors. I'm incredibly grateful to, uh, State Superintendent Woods for reaching out to me and asking me to hold a no-holds-barred teacher burnout task force. He truly tasked us with sitting in the room and everything, just everything that's on your mind. He came in, he said hello, and he said, "I'm leaving this room, and I don't want you to leave out anything." And our, and on that task force had two main charges. The first was to identify the major contributing factors to teacher burnout in our state and to determine possible solutions and strategies that could be implemented on the and to determine possible solutions and strategies that could be implemented on the, on the school, district, and state levels to increase teacher retention, to provide teachers with the support that they need and deserve, and elevate the level of recognition for the professionalism of teachers. I believe that it could be said in many respects that the conclusions that we came to in the report that I'm sharing with you today speak directly to the importance and the power of collective teacher efficacy. The teachers on this task force included me and the other nine finalists for Georgia Teacher of the Year in my 2022 cohort, in addition to teacher representatives from PAGE, GAE, Educators First, and the Department of Education. These teachers were selected to participate because of their recognition by their peers as teacher leaders with a passion for the profession, their commitment to the well-being of students and families who they serve, and their ability to articulate and represent the needs of their entire community. Additionally, they were selected because, as a group, they represent all levels of education, elementary, middle, and high, a variety of content areas and classroom configurations such as SED and ESOL, and both rural and non-rural districts. I'm sorry?
Two men.
Two, uh, let's see. Yes, there were two men. Our first meeting in February was a focus group that was facilitated by members of the Education Policy Team from Carl Vinson, the Carl Vinson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia. And in small groups, the participants shared their observations and their knowledge and their experience about what they believed are factors contributing to teacher burnout in Georgia as a result of the pandemic, as a result of policies and procedures initiated at the school level, at the system level, and at the state level. They further identified the top three factors at each of those levels, school, system, and state, and they made suggestions for how those factors might be minimized or eliminated. Additionally, the small groups were asked to respond to the following questions. What are the consequences of teacher burnout for students? What are the consequences of teacher burnout for the teaching profession and teacher preparation? And what are the consequences of burnout on the day-to-day operations of schools? In whole group discussion, the task force members further discussed, what is making you stay in education? If you're thinking about walking away from education, why? And would you encourage others to enter the profession of teaching? If yes, why? If no, why not? And these discussions were incredibly raw and honest and insightful. Following the first meeting, together with Carl Vinson facilitators, the feedback was analyzed. The issues related very specifically to COVID, like social distancing, masking, and contact tracing, were pulled out. And we organized the remaining feedback, which was now focused on the more institutional factors that were contributing to burnout, into five overarching themes or threads. And those five themes or threads were assessment, preserving and protecting time, pressures and unrealistic expectations, teacher voice and professional growth, and mental health and wellness. And for each of these themes, we assigned a related school, we assigned the related school, system, and state-level feedback that had been identified in the focus group. So when the focus group, when the task force met again in March, our goal was to develop actionable solutions for each of these five threads or themes, again with the help of the facilitators from Carl Vinson. And as, just as during the first meeting, the participants were incredibly passionate and shot straight from the hip, very, very insightful. The suggestions that came out of the meeting rounded out the report that I'm sharing with you today. So the report itself is organized into three main parts. First, there is the background, and that summarizes previous explorations of teacher attrition and responses to those findings. There were some quantitative studies that were done by the state several years prior. It also explains the structure of the, of the burnout task force and the methodology in partnership with Carl Vinson. The next section of the, of the report is an exposition of each of the five themes. So under those expositions, there's a definition of the theme, there are recommendations, and then there are actions that are specific to those recommendations. And then the last section of the report is called the Framework for Action. And it kind of looks like an appendix, but it is equally as important as the rest of the, of the report. It outlines best practices and essential questions for the implementation of selected recommendations and actions. So if we look at the theme of assessment, the summary is that while, while at the state level, high-stakes testing requirements have been reduced to be more in line with federal testing requirements, the number of district-level testing has increased. And the specific recommendations are that state, the state, districts, and school leaders should work to collaboratively accomplish the following. Inventory, evaluate, and reduce tests at the local level to preserve instructional time, reduce redundancy, and ensure a more consistent benchmark of student performance. And build on the progress made in reducing the number of state-required tests by continuing to lower the emphasis on high-stakes testing in the accountability system. Some of the specific actions that were recommended, I won't outline all the actions because it's 35 pages long, right? So I'm trying, but some of the actions that came out of these, these two recommendations included inventories of local assessments to eliminate redundancies, including current classroom teachers in the discussions on the adoption of new assessments or grading policies and procedures, making time spent on assessment transparent to the public, and reevaluating the disproportionate weight played on, placed on testing as it relates to CCRPI and TICUS so that there is a fairer picture of performance. The next thread or theme was preserving and protecting time. Making up for lost in-person instructional time due to the pandemic is essential to the state's academic recovery. Teachers' planning and instructional time must be treated as sacred, both for our state's academic recovery to be successful and effective going forward. The recommendations for the state, districts, and school leaders included prioritizing teachers' planning ti, time to plan for and deliver quality instruction without being interrupted for excessive meetings, trainings, or other duties. Seek ways to streamline and reduce time-intensive paperwork and processes. And increase awareness of and appreciation for the job responsibilities that teachers perform outside of instructional time, planning, apparent contact, grading assignments, engaging in professional learning. Some of the actions that were specific to this included finding ways to protect planning time, compensating teachers who cover classes or take on additional classes in preps or are assigned to other duties during their planning, evaluating meetings to define their purpose and value to establish a productive meeting culture, ensuring adequate time for training on new initiatives while protecting existing responsibilities, streamlining intensive paperwork and data collection processes like MTSS, RTI, IEPs, and evaluating waivers on duty-free lunch, streamlining lesson plan procedures, and defining quality instruction by, by teacher-student interaction rather than by mandated checklists or formulaic The third theme of pressures and unrealistic expectations. Teachers have endured unrealistic expectations that ultimately hinder student achievement. Coming out of the pandemic, the desire to return to normal has also come with an unrealistic expectation that student learning and achievement should immediately return to pre-pandemic levels without giving teachers the time, support, resources, and compassion to meet students at their current academic level. Recommendations to the state, local districts, and school leaders include, set realistic post-pandemic academic benchmarks, identify ways to communicate a fair and clear picture of the hard work that is occurring in classrooms, continue the commitment to compassion over compliance, which is something that's been an initiative on the state level, establish productive partnerships among educators, students, families, and community stakeholders. Some of the action recommendations specifically were balancing and reducing class sizes, evaluating the class-size waiver, providing teachers with additional support on disruptive discipline, eliminating discipline data from the school Climate Star rating, increasing funding and the talent pipeline for support staff, looking at what could be rolled off of teachers' plates when new initiatives are rolled out, fostering understanding between educators, parents, and students so that students are successful while teacher, while educator efforts and expectations are supported, and modernizing the funding formula. Teacher voice and professional growth was our fourth theme. Teachers serve on the front lines and directly impact the learning of students. We must support those who support our students. The specific recommendations were to go beyond recovery and reimagine an educational system that engages teacher voice and teaches, and treats teachers as professionals, clearly define and provide support for teachers throughout their professional careers, from the first-year teacher to the teacher leader and beyond. Specific recommendations included protecting healthcare and retirement benefits, extending the teacher's salary scale to fund step raises at every age, at every stage, on every level, evaluating teacher certification and salary schedule waivers, removing barriers to certification and endorsements, transforming the evaluation, the evaluation system from a punitive tool to a professional growth tool for all teachers, no matter their stage, making sure coaches, consultants, and leaders have classroom experience and credibility, and making current classroom teachers part of the shared decision-making on strategic planning, allocation of resources, programs, and initiatives, providing teachers with leadership opportunities on councils and leadership teams, and personalizing professional development and establishing strong induction and mentorship programs. Oops, sorry. I didn't click while I was talking. Mental health and wellness was the, is our, is our last theme. Just as it created stress on students and families, the pandemic both contributed additional stressors and exposed existing stressors. Recommendations include provide a stable and supportive environment in which teachers and teacher morale are valued, provide additional administrative support, recognition, and access to wellness programs, and recognize that teachers are people with the same challenges, stresses, hopes, dreams, and potential we all have, and treat them accordingly. Some of the specific recommendations are providing mental health, health support programs for teachers and staff as, as well as students, offering professional development for teachers and administrators on how to partner with school counselors, reevaluating how we label our schools, recognizing teacher for efforts that are beyond test scores, creating collaborative work environments rather than competitive ones, and celebrating people over programs so that we are nurturing cultures of trust, respect, autonomy, empathy, and communication. So as I mentioned, there's that important section in the back called the Framework for Action, just as important as the beginning, the middle section that defines the threads. And it outlines best practices and essential questions for the implementation of selected actions. And we did this because task force members had even more specific suggestions that were related to some of these actions. So an example of that would be if I was looking at action number five underneath the, underneath the section for, I'm sorry, I lost track of myself. If I was looking at action number five, under, under, under pressures and unrealistic expectations. So transform the teacher evaluation system from a punitive tool to a professional growth tool that supports the development of teachers from beginning teacher to teacher leader. So we have that as an action, and if you go to the back section, you could find some more recommendations and essential questions that extend from that action. So I'm not going to read through all of these, but if you go to the back section of the report, you'll find some even more specifics that could not be captured in that one bullet So if I go back to what I shared with you about what teacher burnout is, the reason why our teachers are falling in the river, they were heard loud and clear in that task force. Workload, perceived lack of control, lack of reward or recognition, poor relationships, lack of fairness, or values mismatch. So now that this report has been released, state leaders, district leaders, community members really need to listen to the voices of teachers together with teachers, not in, not in silos, but together. And what this task force is asking for is that that listening be very intentional, internalized, empathized with, and that we need to seize the moment to take advantage of the tremendous opportunities that these voices are presenting to us, are bringing to us, so that we can bring our educators, our colleagues, back from the burnout, so that they can experience the joy and the passion that comes with the privilege that we have in being teachers. In some new developments, so to that point was where I gave a presentation to the State Board of Education. And since that time, there has been some, there have been some new developments that I wanted to share with you. One of them is that at the end of the month, the Department of Education is going to be announcing the release of a statewide employee assistance program. All K through 12 employees, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, everyone will be entitled to six counseling sessions through this program, which is fantastic. Hasn't been completely publicly released yet, but been allowed to share. And I know that we have our employee assistance program here in Savannah-Chatham County, but there are a lot of district, yes, yes, Savannah-Chatham County, because what I was going to say was there are districts that don't even have these kinds of things. And so the state is, is picking up that piece, which I think is wonderful and very much ties into many of the things that we were saying as a task force. Another thing that they're going to be doing is they're going to be announcing a pilot to redesign TICUS for districts. Oh, yeah, good. We are too. And I don't have all the details on that, but it will be voluntary for districts to participate. There will be funding for stipends for teachers to participate in that, in that pilot as well. So pay attention for details to come out about that. And then also, as I mentioned, our report was done in partnership with Carl Vinson Institute. And the DOE is in the process of finalizing a contract with Carl Vinson to replicate the type of focus groups that were done on the state level on the local level. So it'll be offered on a first-come, first-served basis, starting with 12 districts. The limits are mainly due to the manpower limits of Carl Vinson. There are only so many facilitators that they have, right? And it's anticipated that this will be presented at the state board meeting in September for some kind of approval. So be on the lookout for that opportunity. So one of the big recommendations of the task force, obviously, was that, you know, we have this, this state-level report, but on the local level, it's important to dig too, because not every district has the same issues, right? There are some districts that have six schools, there are some districts that have 50 schools, 37,000 students. And so we need to do that local dive so we can take the information from the state and the information on the local level to figure out what do we need to prioritize in our space, right? So taking advantage of something like that would be tremendous. Highly recommend. They were great to work with. So in conclusion, clearly, the causes for teacher burnout and the degree of burnout manifest differently in different people, depending on the school they're in, the district they're in, the state they're in, because we know that this is a nationwide problem. But I'm hopeful that together, that all education stakeholders can turn to one another as partners in purpose and find a way to collaboratively seize the moment, to encourage schools and districts to perform their own reflective, intentional, localized analyses of the factors contributing to burnout and the solutions that could be offered, whether this is through a partnership with Carl Vinson or not. Together with that knowledge, the state report and the local report can help address burnout that much more strategically and thoroughly and effectively. Some of the strategies and solutions identified in the report, they'll be easy to, to implement immediately, but some others might take some more time. Logistics, it might involve processes, funding, legal matters, right, or other hurdles that come from shifting from some bad practices to some best practices. But none of those hurdles should deter any of us from the opportunity that is in front of us, to turn the corner, or from our obligation to function with a long-term vision for what all of us want for our schools, for our students, for our teachers, and our staff, and our communities. Because teachers, they don't want to walk away. The motivation for why they originally became a teacher, their aspirations to make that dream come true, their passion for making a difference, it's the same exact motivations that everyone in this room has, and those things have not gone away. We just want to bring our teachers back from that place where they are right now so that they can pour into our students and pour into our communities. So I'm, I'm really hopeful that people will take advantage of this opportunity, this place and time to focus in and to tap into the resource that is the cohesion and the expert, the expertise of collective efficacy, and to take advantage of this opportunity to foster a culture in education that consistently ensures that everyone is successful, that everyone feels heard and valued, because when we heard and valued, because when we elevate and take care of our teachers, we elevate and take care of our students, and that is truly what it is all about. So I thank you all for giving me this time to share with you, and I hope that we can all seize this moment. Thank you.
So, and let's say, we're all just happy that Ms. Goldman is able to share this presentation with us, and she will continue to be afforded the opportunity to share across the state, which is really helpful. And I was very proud that many of the strategies they have recommended, we have in place or we have been working on, so that's exciting. But we also want to give you an opportunity, after we hear from Mr. Ray, give you an opportunity to respond in terms of our planning for going forward, definitely building much of this in policy, because that's really where the efforts can come to be. If you have a few questions for Ms. Goldman, I'm going to ask you to ask her now, and then, of course, she'll be around for a little bit too. So Ms. Hall?
I'd just like you to talk a minute about the values mismatch. I'm not sure I understand that, and I want to, I know you're not saying that the teacher's values are very different from our state strategies and plans that Dr. Levett spoke about, so kind of tell me what values mismatch is.
I think values mismatch really, it might almost be better stated as kind of priorities mismatch. Like, what, you know, what are people prioritizing? Are they prioritizing, to what degree are they prioritizing academic achievement over social emotional wellness of our students? So there are some, I think there are some places where teachers feel like it's all about the numbers, it's all about the numbers, as opposed to taking an approach that is looking at the whole child, that's looking at the experience of the whole child. Where is that child coming from? What happens in the classroom isn't just from what happens in the classroom, it's from what's happening at home, what's happening in their community. And so it's about people being realistic about who our students are, and us sharing that, having that shared value of who we are trying to help.
Thank you. Dr. Raymond, and then Ms. Rosky, and Dr. Hussey, do you have the handout?
Just kind of following off of Ms. Hall's comment, and you were at our last board meeting. How, as a teacher, not try to step away from state, you know, all the glories that you have, but just as a teacher, from some of the schools that our community want to come and only discuss numbers, to try to paint a picture of failure? And how did that make you feel sitting there, and how does that make you feel as a teacher? And how do you, or what do you hear from your fellow teachers? Because I do believe they might have spoken about the school that you teach about, that you teach at.
Yes. It's really disheartening to have people reduce your efforts to numbers. I would, I think that people need to focus in on growth, as opposed to focusing in on a box that a student is supposed to fit in within a certain timeline. Again, going back to what I was saying earlier, our students come into our schools with so much more than people realize. I would really wish that some of the people who try to minimize our efforts or diminish them to such simplistic definitions would step into our schools and watch what's going on, and stand next to us every single day, and help our students and help our community. I wish that they would, I wish that they would bring with them some actions, as opposed to just some hurtful words. And I would challenge them to stand up in a faculty meeting at my school and say what they said to every single teacher in the room.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are amazing.
She is.
You are amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting your heart and soul into this, because it's clear. And I think that that question, it segues to, so, I mean, I don't think there's anyone in this room that probably disagrees with anyone in our report, and I suspect you go around to the state, to every district, you might get a similar reaction. Our schools and our teachers have been made targets by society in a way that we have never seen before. In discussions, did you talk about plans, or, I mean, I think that this needs to be like on the front page of newspaper every day to next year, about what all of this rhetoric, the damage this rhetoric does to the morale of our teachers and our students and our staff. Can you talk about kind of a, not a publicity campaign, but how do we turn that tide? I mean, and I think it has to start in our local community.
Right. I guess I just would hope that a balance of community members would come out and speak to counterbalance some of that negativity, because I know that there are more members of our community that support us than don't. The unfortunate thing is kind of the loudest and the most kind of controversial, get the press, or get the headline, or get the, you know, kind of, when you simplify things, and it's the tweet world, right? You simplify everything down to 100 characters, and that's what people hear. But it's so, what's happening in schools is so much more complex, it's so much richer, there's so much more depth to it and complexity. And I think that most of our community members appreciate that, and they understand that. And I just wish, to your point, I wish that we could find a way to have those voices be heard so that teachers can feel elevated. You know, I wasn't advertising, but I wasn't in PR, so. Stacy? I think, yeah, it is, it's very unfortunate that the negativity is what captures everybody. It captures the imagination, it captures the dynamic, when there is so much hard work going into what's going on. I was on sabbatical last year, and I was talking with Kurt and Ramon the other day, and I described my experience coming back in, I've been back in the classroom now for two weeks, and I feel like I am a hamster that's hopping back onto a wheel that's already moving, you know? And it is constant, it is fast-paced, it is incessant, it is all-consuming, and our teachers are so focused on doing what is right for our students in any given moment. And I just wish that the naysayers would appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hussey, Mr. Moss, and Dr. Howard Hall.
Thank you. I really appreciate your presentation, I appreciate the report and the resources, and I just would like to, wanted to say, I appreciate that, because I like resources and homework. The book on burnout is on Scribd, so I've already added it to my list of something to listen to.
It's great, it is really good. It's not specific to teaching, it's specific to industry, but I read it, and I was like, oh, yep.
Yeah, I just sent it to my supervisor, I was like, to the branch, everybody, let's talk about this at the branch meeting, so thank you for that resource. But more importantly and relevant is this report, I think it would be really good for those of us who are on board accountability, so I'm kind of sliding this in, on our October 25th meeting is when we're going to hear from school leaders, and we're going to get Chevron reports from schools to see how they're doing. I think it'd be really good for those of us who come to that meeting to have this report read, so we can inform how we receive that information and the kind of questions that we have, because we'll have kind of board that backstory, the story behind the numbers that we often talk about in that meeting. So that, just wanted to kind of make that announcement, and ask those who plan to attend to consider reading this report prior to the October 25th VAC meeting.
Thank you, I'm glad that this report is speaking to you in that way and able to make an impact.
Mr. Moss, Dr. Howard Hall, and then Dr. Buck, I'm sure has a, he's going to have more questions.
So, number one, do you know if we, and this may be a question for Dr. Levett, have we signed up to be one of those local?
Where's my phone, where's Matt? Yes, now that hasn't been approved yet by the State Board of Education, but it's going to be, it's to be presented, yes.
No, on top of that, we were a pilot race to the top, which is where the original evaluation came from, so we would plan, we would hope that we would still continue to be there.
Fantastic. And number two, and this is, my background's in communications, and I want to clear something up, gosh, I apparently, my campaign, I love teachers.
Fantastic, thank you.
I adore teachers. I come from a family, a lot of educators. I appreciate what you have to do. I think as people in our profession, I think it's equally up to us to communicate to the public, when we talk about accountability and we talk about goals, what that other is other than test scores, because to the general public, the only thing they see, that's the only, so we need to do a better job, and we can't just use the phrase, well, there's more to it. Let's tell people what that more to it is, that you're dealing with a child whose parents may have been shot last weekend, and we can expect that school to do the same thing. I met with the police department a couple weeks ago, and we talked about that, we talked about how important it is that we are taking care of these children. You know, so I would hope in the future, and I know we will, that we will concentrate on how we communicate what our idea, what our definition of success is, because if the public hears, as those of us who are holding up, even up with us here, as Paul Harvey said, the rest of the story. I think that, because we do want to support our teachers, and we don't blame teachers, but we've got to back our teachers by telling the public, this is what, this is why these are great teachers, this is what they do day by day.
I would have loved to have done that the other day, when someone was talking about Hess numbers. Yes, because, because I can, you know, respond to that, but not in that moment.
Right. We need to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion at the state level regarding differentiating high-stakes testing?
Differentiate high-stakes testing?
Because here's the thing, instruction is differentiated, the way of life is differentiated. If you walk into a grocery store, everybody is not doing the same job. However, we're giving everybody the same test, and we're judging our students and our teachers based on a test score. So is that being discussed at the state level? Because regardless of what we say to the public, or how we say it, or what we do, it's going to all boil back down to what a third grader's test score should be to determine if not he's reading on grade level, and we are being oblivious to student growth.
Right, I would say, and I can't say specifically what kind of initiatives the state's trying to do with that respect, I would say that the people I've spoken to on the state level would completely agree with you, but I think there are federal mandates that are impacting the necessity to have the state test on the grade level, too. You know, it's kind of, it's filtering down, I don't know, and this is a little bit out of my wheelhouse, I don't know how much leeway the state has on some of it. I know that the state has cut down the number of exams that students have to take, federally mandated tests, so that we are now only two tests over, in the state of Georgia, our students only take two more tests than what is federally mandated, and that's been a cutback that's been happening over years. It had kind of expanded very much, and then they kind of shrunk it down, but that doesn't address your question of differentiation, so I don't know what's being done specifically on differentiation.
We haven't seen anything on differentiation, but the superintendents across the country have said you need to move to a growth model. They're saying they need to move to a growth model way before now. The pandemic only gave us a great invitation to look at how Susie does when she enters school, and how Susie does when she leaves school at the end of the year, not what, how her achievement is represented by a single digit or a single test experience. There are states that have moved to a growth model, let's look at North Carolina and a few others that are right here, close by, and they have taken a whole different approach. Secretary of Education Cardona has not been open to that, but we are certainly continuing to push for it, because it is much more child-centered and much more developmentally oriented. So there are leaders across the nation that have said you need to take a different approach. So going back to no child left behind, we just seem to be really steep in that, and people hang on to it, because it allows them to launch whatever effort they have launched to discredit the work of teachers and the work of schools.
Amen.
Mr. Heschmeyer, and then Ms. Johnson.
Well, what's ironic about this point is, we do have a growth model, and our response to, well, your third graders at this school aren't doing well, our response is, our graduation rate is 96%, and by, you know, these kids are entering kindergarten, and they're getting through high school, they're passing state-mandated tests and some of our tests, and they're graduating. You know, the fact that they're in the 45th percentile on a flawed G-mass, which everyone says is flawed, to us is less important, the fact that they're graduating and passing these tests are more important, but then the responses we get back are nah, we believe the flawed numbers that are negative more. And that's part of the communication effort that we have to engage in. So I really appreciate the report, I have lots of thoughts on some of the specifics, which I assume we'll discuss more after Mr. Ray's presentation. My specific questions were along the lines of Tanya's, and maybe you've already answered it. So I've always struggled with, what do the feds say we have to do, what does the state say we have to do, and what are we doing to ourselves? And where can we streamline, what can we get rid of? Dr. Levett knows how much we talk about, I talk about testing versus assessments, but my question is, some of the comments I hear from a lot of teachers are, the state mandated pacing schedule, or whatever we call it now, gives us no time to do planning, no time to do, you know, they're unrealistic in terms of the pace, it doesn't let us actually teach, it just gives us 11 minutes to deliver this, three minutes to assess, and then we move on. And then the state mandated testing as well, you addressed some of that. So specifically, do you know, is the state superintendent, the state board, are they looking at the things that the state mandates and trying to cut back on it to give the local districts more leeway? Or are they still trying to exercise that micromanagement that they continue to do?
I think that that would probably depend on the issue, and I'm probably not the best person to answer the question, because I would hate to overstate, right? But I do think that, I mean, I will say this, the state is taking this report incredibly seriously. The first page is a letter from Superintendent Woods, and it is being, it is being shared far and wide to be made part of the decision-making, part of the collective decision-making that is happening on the state level. In terms of, you know, your question about, like, state control versus kind of the local autonomy, I think that would probably depend on the specific issue, and I just wouldn't feel comfortable speaking on that, I'm sorry, I wish I had a better answer for you.
Mr. Johnson, Ms. Heinz?
I just want to say thank you.
Dr. Buck?
Just a little quick, for those of you who don't know, Ms. Goldman came and spoke to my church this past Sunday, she did a phenomenal job, and touched on this report, which is just speaking to my congregation, and then afterwards, I had a chance to talk to her about the report, and she told me, don't forget about the back pages. For those of you who haven't read the report, read all 35 pages. It was actually, I didn't read the back parts, I thought it was just, you know, basically like footnotes and everything, and I actually went to read it, that's where the meat of this report really is. It's to really get down to the districts, to really look at themselves in the mirror to be able to do that, so, thank you, it's a fantastic report.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you are part of our district, that helped put this together.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Goldman, I would like to thank the others, as foresaid, thank you for your shared part in this report.
Thank you.
And I'm sure the teachers will appreciate it. And if we could do anything, quote unquote, to prevent hemorrhaging of our teachers from what they know how to do best. If we can make their workload a little easier. I can recall many years ago, whenever, all the technology of whatever came along during that time, this is going to make your job easier. But from following this down through the years, it has become more and more complicated. So thank you for your efforts and I will read that report in detail.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for all of your questions and for giving me the opportunity to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wood's going to have the final remarks on this.
Uh, some quick things. One, just kind of an observation. Sometimes we all have fallen in the erroneous ditch that everything got bad during COVID because it's easier to blame COVID. Many of these reasons that you have just shared with us were reasons teachers were leaving the field a long time before COVID. And I only say that because I'm just reemphasizing what you already know. Secondly, seeing as part of it, a real new emphasis on health and wellness and all of that. Teachers forever have been notoriously poor judges of their own health and taking care of themselves. And so having it and having to do something about it is going to be two different things. Most of the teachers I know come to work before daylight and leave just about dark. And to say, now you need to go to the gym and work on your mental health is just not going to work.
Right.
And I applaud what we're doing, but it's a mindset difference for the society. Thirdly, and this is the really important thing, I think, that I want to say. Terms of the criticisms we have lived with over the last year and a half, two years, I would ask that as I go out of office, that beginning this fall, all board members start having their district town hall meetings again. That was the, that is, in my opinion, the primary reason that we have been such a target at our board meetings. Because they are very quick to say, we talk, you don't answer, you just sit there. Nobody can talk to you, nobody can get questions answered. For those of you who were around before, remember how important the district town hall meetings were. People like Sean never did, I don't think, have a town hall meeting, but he made all of his PTAs. And that's where he did his communicating. When you as a district leader are responsible for that, you pick what you want to share with the folks and have the staff there. And, you know, the board president never took any part in that other than to be there to support you folks. But what that did was give a group from our district access to you and get questions answered and, and, and be able to hear from staff about certain things. So please, please, please consider going back to that in whatever form you choose as a district leader to make it, because I believe that is one of the primary reasons we have caught such grief in the board meeting, because they don't know us like they used to.
Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Incredibly powerful questions and responses. I think it's really important that you have an opportunity to hear from the people who do the work. Mrs. Hall reminds us repeatedly that we want to see the people who do the work. For those of us who are in schools, we have an opportunity outside of our small group of friends that we talk to. We have an opportunity to see the people who are on the line every day and who show up consistently and give their very best. And it is very disheartening to hear from our teachers who say, these people are talking and they have no idea about what we're doing. And while it is, it may be intended toward the superintendent, it is really casting aspersions on our teachers since, and, you know, it's, it's just very, very challenging. So I thought it was really important for you to know also that working with internal audit, we're also canvassing, talking with our teachers. Ms. Goldman is also quick to remind everybody that as she traveled across the state, she found very few districts where there was at least a professional senate, where we had an opportunity to hear from teachers on a regular basis, and our plan is to continue to do that. So we will always attempt to get that information out there. And we appreciate our board members being ambassadors in that, in that effort. Yes, ma'am.
Can I just add, I didn't realize that that was Sean's idea to attend his PTA meetings. But I think for the rest of us, that's a great idea. Because so often, what I've found is that these town halls we have, we have people there who don't have any children in school and have not had children in school in, you know, forever. At those PTA meetings, mainly you're dealing with parents who are currently in that school so that we get to actually hear from them as opposed to the wise and wonderful taxpayers who, you know, they have a stake, but they don't have the real stake of having that child in a school that we can really affect. So I think that's a great idea. Sean, did you find that a lot of parents would be at the PTA meetings or?
It's not just parents, it's teachers.
Okay.
Because when you're talking about problems with something that's being implemented, the teacher will tell you what the hiccups are and the parents will give you their perspective. The other meetings, I try to go to PTA and school council meetings. School council are the elected parents and teacher reps focusing on kind of school-wide issues. But all of them are good, you know, it depends on the district. I mean, Ms. Heinz would have huge district meetings and there'd be lots of turnout. So, I mean, I think Joe's point is go to whatever meetings you can and get out there and see people in the community.
Yeah, well, the comments and the criticisms that we've listened to at board meetings have come from people who have pretty much identified themselves as non-parents. So that's why I'm thinking we need to really hear from the grassroots people who children are really.
Yes, ma'am. And Dr. Howard Hall, that's the last comment. Spoken like a true teacher.
We were told.
Dr. Howard Hall has, has the last comment before we take a stand-up stretch.
Just very briefly, in my district, District Eight, I attend five neighborhood meetings monthly. Because in my district, we have many neighborhoods and meetings organizations. And that's where I spend a lot of my time in the neighborhoods, at the neighborhood association meetings.
Thank you. So I think the moving out of the height of the pandemic allows us to see more of the pre-COVID activities. And I think the more people we have out speaking the truth, the better. And it's not campaigning as much as it is informing. Because there's a whole lot that happens in the school district that you're aware of. People don't watch the board meetings unless they have an opportunity to be on camera. So most people don't get their information that way. But with you being out there, certainly you have an opportunity to inform and to educate and then to also get feedback. So we're going to take a stretch break, if you will, maybe about five minutes. And then Mr. Ray is going to share some additional information. And after that, you'll have an opportunity to do a little work in response to both presentations. Thank you, let's take about five minutes. We started. Yeah, we don't want to do, can you hear me clap, clap? Thank you very much for, um, thank you very much for giving us your attention to a very important part of our retreat agenda. We look forward to continuing the conversations. We have provided for you, a way for you to stay engaged. After your great lunch, you will find some bubbles right there at your seat. And we invite you to engage with them anytime during this presentation. But you still have to pay attention though. You also have, like a good teacher, I am always a teacher and my daughter is a teacher. So I'm reminded always about things that we undergo. She religiously watches the board meetings and has lots to say about what people say about teachers. You have some homework there on a brightly colored yellow sheet of paper, which really allows us to reflect on what we're hearing today from both Mrs. Goldman and Mr. Ray about how we address and prevent burnout. And while it addresses teacher burnout specifically, we want to think about burnout for all employees. We definitely want to think about how we can deal with our largest core, a single group, and that would be teachers. Given that your role is board governance, we're looking at what policies you might suggest that we consider putting into place so that we can systematically, organizationally, address burnout. And you will see that I included Mrs. Goldman's point about it's an organizational issue that requires an organizational solution. So I'll invite you, as a teacher always, to think about the homework in advance. I promise you, it won't take more than fifteen minutes. I want you to think about it, hear Mr. Ray's report in view of Mrs. Goldman's report, and then give your own thoughts to it. And then we'll start in the morning, as we do in our classrooms, with reviewing what your thoughts are about what policies we can put into place or consider to help address retention, recruitment, burnout, all of those issues. There have been actions taken across the country. Some of the school districts have been very aggressive and a little more progressive by moving to a four-day week, allowing a fifth day of the week for teachers to do the planning that they need to do and concentrating on preparing good lessons for their students. They have not always been welcomed, but I will tell you, the communities have at least supported them. And then there have been also shorter workdays and also extended calendars. So we have an opportunity to think about how we can stay ahead of the curve by ensuring that we're recruiting and retaining teachers who are strong and wish to continue serving and not feeling burned out. So that's your homework. I know you're going to bring it in in the morning with some really good suggestions. At this time, I want to ask you to join me in welcoming Mr. Ray, who's going to talk a little bit about recruitment and retention strategies.
Join me, please, in welcoming him.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I had a thought, I had to write it down, sorry. Good afternoon. Following Ms. Goldman is going to be very much a challenge, but certainly we've worked together and we have communicated and traveled across the state. We've been, you know, in my capacity and her capacity, we've kind of crossed paths many times. So certainly we've, we've done that. Did want to talk to you about teacher recruit, uh, sorry, want to talk to you about goal three, the way forward. Did want to start off with some few thoughts. As Ms. Goldman, I didn't think about this, but when she mentioned the World Health Organization, they actually defined, they call it, they called burnout an occupational phenomenon. That was defined publicly in two thousand nineteen, before the pandemic. The World Health Organization made that declaration. When do you think these statements were made? I would say the main source of stress are layoffs, rightsizing, trying to get the most efficient use of time out of your talent. Not going to read all, but there aren't enough hours in the workday to accomplish everything that needs to be done. Two thousand and three. All right, next one I have for everybody. See what you get on this one. Who espoused this philosophy? Prominent industry leader touts eighty and eighty-hour work, sorry, eighty-hour work weeks as the bare minimum to change the world. This industry is, is the biggest advocate, outspoken about the benefits of the revenue prospects, and without any possible recourse from employees, they have the most to gain. Who'd you think it is? Henry Ford?
Elon Musk.
Elon Musk? Henry, Henry? It is Elon Musk in twenty twenty-one. And it is the tech industry that is that biggest advocate of having employees work eighty hours a week. Next one. Can you guess the decade in country? On August twenty-ninth in a year, a country in the top ten of the largest economic, largest economies in the world declared that employers cannot require employees to work more than from nine AM to nine PM, six days a week. Anybody on the decade? Twenties? Okay. Next? In what country?
U.S.
Okay. And actually, it was September twenty, twenty-one. That's what last year, last September, just declared, declared that no one can work more than seventy-two hours in a week. So it's just giving you a perspective of how. I can't imagine, I mean, we work a lot, but being forced to work a lot, it's like, it's totally different. But just wanted to give you that perspective. The way forward, goal three, as I mentioned, recruit, retain. One of the things that Sherman did, local Sherman Savannah in two thousand, around two thousand and nineteen, was coined the phrase of retention is the new recruiting. And we've kind of been doing that and I've expressed that to the board, that it's, it's upon all of us. All of you are recruiters. I get messages from you, I have this candidate that's interested. Every time you see that, every time you see a candidate, every time you talk positively about the district, you're recruiting. You're not physically doing it from the standpoint that you're hiring somebody, but you're advocating for the district. And that's what we need, because all of us are here, all fifty-six hundred employees that you have are here because somebody gave you an idea, you saw a posting, some thought about why you want to come to this district. Staff numbers. We don't have the twenty twenty-two numbers yet, but I'm just showing you twenty twenty-one, FY twenty twenty-one. You can see that our, the national average for teacher retention is sixteen percent. We were at fourteen point three. And you can see our staff, support staff averages as well. So we will have that information. We're still with Immunis, we have a different system and it's just not as easy. But all, all the information is not in there yet. We're still working to get all the data in and then we'll be able to pull that information out. Behind the numbers. Got a hundred, I think it's a hundred, don't have that number right, sorry, not one four nine. But the seventy-nine and the thirty-nine as far as certified is correct, as far as the number of retirees that we have. We can't control the number of retirees for any given year, it could be up and down. But one thing you should know is that there are a hundred and sixty-one retirees that can, uh, sorry, certified staff that can retire. certified staff that can retire right now. Call it quits today. I know Larry brought it up. I brought it up. But they could call it. Now, we're not in that number, though. But if you look at, if you think about the cabinet and you think about, you know, most of the cabinet can retire, and most of the senior staff that you have in the district can retire. And classified, we have 81 that can retire. But look, 50 of the certified are over 32 years, which means they could have retired two years ago, but they still stay. Something's still keeping them here. The same thing with classified. There's still something here that's keeping, keeping them and us here.
Can, may I speak to that?
Yes.
I mean, I don't have a lot to contribute, but I was making a little joke over here that, you know, we better be nice to cabinet because so many folks are able to retire. But I think that's something that the public doesn't think about. They don't think about how many people don't have to work with us, don't have to be here, don't have to be contributing their expertise. And so it really behooves us to take care of things that create a hostile work environment. And so I, I think the public isn't aware that, I think that they think teachers have to take the abuse that they take, they have to deal with burnout, and a lot of them don't. And I try to be aware of it, but I'd like that these numbers really illustrate it.
And, you know, that was one of the comments that, you know, Ms. Dennis is like, where you make a comment about a school, their employees at that school, you know, at what point do you push them out when they're very productive employees? And really, a lot of the alternative that we have are substitutes or no one. So it's not like you can say, I want this person out, and then it's going to be replaced by somebody else. All right, so the normal range of our teachers annually that we hire, 375 to 2, to 425, that's where we've been, other than, other than during the recession in 2010, 2011, during that timeframe. That's kind of where we maintain. We had 200, 413 new hires, teachers. 29 were classified staff last year promoted to be teachers. We had one secretary that was promoted to be teacher. So we have a grow our own, and so I'll talk about that a little bit later. But think about, I was talking to Dr. Patton, who was over our certified staffing a couple of days ago, and we were talking about, somebody brought up the point about paraprofessionals. And she said, that's, that's my, that's my, that's my, that is my group of employees to go after because we have over 600 paraprofessionals in our district. When you count the paraprofessionals and you count the media specialists, and on the agenda, we always show those ones with degrees, and that's that, that's one of the points that we see it. So whenever we find somebody that has a degree, that's a parer or any classified, we send them information about being a teacher. And so that's how this, that's the easy part of how we start off with the communication for, for all of our hourly staff. We have 187, 187 alternately certified teachers. I mean, they didn't come through a traditional program. 50 hired this year, but we have 120 international teachers that are, that are hired this year. So when we talk about a teacher shortage, there is a teacher shortage. Question is where you get the supply. Well, we found, we found a gap to be able to get that supply, to fill that void from our international teachers. Many of those are some of the reasons why you've heard that we, teachers are stressed because they have to fill in, because some of the international teachers haven't arrived yet. But there will be a point when they're all here. So that's what we look forward to, is that point. Because if we didn't have that, we would, we don't have enough subs, wouldn't have anybody. So this is kind of helping us be able to get to that point of where we are right now, which is low number of vacancies that we currently have. What countries primarily? Many, India, Philippines, Jamaica, Bahamas. I'll get that list for the board. We have about 20 countries that I'm aware of that we have the most international teachers from, yes.
Are there real language barriers when you get someone's phone?
That, yes. And interviews occur. So many of the applicants that we have that we, you know, that we're, that teachers or staff or administrators feel would not be able to, you know, students would not be able to be understood, don't get hired, but again, we do have some that we, that, you know, work on it. But a lot of the international teachers we hire have already been in the United States. They've been somewhere else, and they come to us. We are, we are a school district that international teachers want to come to. Dr. Vet sees it all the time because we do also go through the process of sponsoring green cards. So that's something that when somebody is here, so we, we get, and I think I've told the board this, we had over 500 or 600 international teacher applications by end of February. And that, majority of those are coming from inside the United States, not outside, because they're looking for opportunities, and so that's what we look at. But that's the way we fill our goal. Looking at fostering a positive climate and culture, openness, equity, honesty, and transparency. As we look at that and look at burnout, and look at some of the things that we're doing, the Wellness Day Wellness Program, we have an out, we have a wellness group now, wellness department that is within the district. Superintendent's recognition to reward schools of unique approaches to supportive community and climate. You all know about what we did with the 5,600, was brought up before. I mean, that was a, those are the type things that keep our employees engaged and keep our employees excited. Those are the type things that come to mind and, and as I think about it. Ms. Kebowski made a joke about calling me Mr. Bubbles. And, you know, many at the central office will remember, we always have these different type activities. Superintendent sponsors different type activities. Some of you recall that I was Mr. Candyman. And you recall on the second floor, because we all had different, different responsibilities, and the second floor actually won, and I was Mr. Candyman, had a red jacket on, a little hat on. Still show you all that. So those are the fun type things that keep, keep employees engaged as opposed to the monotony of having to just, just do the work. And those are the things that you'll see in all our schools. You have the pictures, the beacon, everybody wants to be in the beacon. Soon as I walked into the office the other day, the beacon had just come out. Have you seen the beacon? Have you seen the beacon? No, I haven't seen the beacon yet. But we are in the beacon. So human resources in the beacon, so everybody was proud about having the human resource department pitcher in the beacon. Those are the type things that happen in schools all over, and everybody's looking to see who was in the beacon. Those are the type of things that you can't really measure, but they bring, they just make people proud because we're, we're in, we're in the beacon. We've actually done it. So those are the small things that are done, but we have a lot of large products that we're trying to work on, too. And a lot of the large aspects that we want to get to as well. Continuing, you can see a number of things that we do with expanding employee perks. We have perks that we offer for employees, businesses want to contribute. We still do that, and a lot of employees take advantage of those. And we, you know, we want to expand those things. We want to do performance and service awards for good. Trying to get into a mode of, well, can, can employees earn credit to be able to get to something, to buy a ticket to see the Savannah bananas, or buy a ticket to do something else? So that's kind of where our next phase, what we're going to try to do for our employees, to see if we can do that. Because that would be something that, you know, they could have challenges and do things in the schools. And, and then we're supporting it district-wide, at a district level, but then they could do things at the schools to have benefits that, that we all would enjoy. So those are some of the things that we're planning and doing, going to be doing this year. The growth, you know, what do we do about, we want to make sure that we're maximizing employee pathways and succession planning, as I mentioned before. We want to also have those opportunities for teachers and staff to grow. Those paraprofessionals became teachers. But what about the teachers that want to just become master teachers? Or teachers that just want to have that professional development to be better at what they do? They may not want to go anywhere. It's one of the things that I've mentioned to the board before was that, in this district, we value that you can stay where you are, have a good career, and retire where you are. That has been our value, and that's how, that's how our paid salary structure is created. That's how our pay is created, and that's, we value longevity. Ms. Dennis did mention, I'm sorry, Ms. Goldman did mention that, that we, that as we look at the salary, that the report talked about salaries and talked about teacher salaries. That is something that we need to do at the top of the scale. One of the things about the state scale that people don't realize is that the state scale actually stops count, they do one through eight. Then after that, they only move every two years. And a lot of people don't realize that. So what have we done locally a long time ago? We added steps in the middle so that teachers would be able to see that growth from year to year, but it's not the same. It's not the same as if the state would say, we're going to, we're going to value these. So if the state made that change, it would make a huge difference because we wouldn't just be footing the bill the whole time, and we'd be able to use our local supplement to kind of expand on top of what they do. But they do not, they only move once every two years after step eight, I believe. So eight, nine, and 10 are the same, 11 and 12 are the same on the state scale, but we do something locally, but we just have to do more, as she was mentioning. And we want, we continue expanding our G-TAP. And as I mentioned, the professional learning, professional learning has been a key point and key partner in being able to, to do that. I know it's moved to academic affairs that we talked before, but we still have that partnership that we've always had before, and we're going to continue to grow our, grow our own teacher, I'm sorry, grow our own teachers by using, by make, hopefully keep bringing pathways for our current employees. But again, a pathway just, is not just about getting to another job. It could just be about growing, to be more confident in what you do, to be more, have your job be more fulfilling. Always have people asking me, say, well, how do we, this is something that is known. When you think about Effingham and Bryan County, over 20% of our teachers live in Effingham and Bryan County. So every time we have, they, they open a school, they open a program, people say, well, all, all the teachers left and went to Bryan County. To know what's happening is, they're going to go to Bryan County, but guess what? The new hires that we have are probably going to also move in Bryan County. But why do we keep a lot of teachers from Bryan County in our schools? Because you can't teach orchestra in Bryan County. You can't teach some of these other specialties in Bryan County. You can't be fulfilled without teaching a specialty necessarily in a building that you'd like to be in, in Bryan County. That's why many of those teachers drive in 45 minutes. We have it happen all the time consistently. So that's what I have people focused on, is that, yes, we have, yes, we can do that. We even have over 5% of our teachers live in South Carolina and drive in every day from South Carolina. We know, we know them. So it's, it's the passion of being in the school and being in Chatham County. Otherwise, they could just go to the school system they're in, but they don't want to do that. They want to come across the bridge, and they want to teach in some capacity in Chatham County for some reason, for something that is going on in that school that they like. And those are the type things that we need to highlight that's happening with our employees. But yes, we do have, we do have to make sure that we are working on leadership, working on the climate. Because we also know that when people leave, there are factors that cause them to leave based on the administration, based on interpersonal connections or, or just interpersonal conflicts they may have with other staff. So those are the things that we need to work on outside of what can the board do, policies. So those are the steps that everybody has a piece, as Ms. Goldman mentioned. Everybody has a piece that we could work on, and if we all do it collectively, we could be that, that school district that kind of reduces that burnout, reduces that, you know, what happens with teachers wanting to leave. All staffers want, our staffers want to leave. But when we talk about burnout, when that's not just talking about teachers, it's all positions. Doesn't matter what it is, it's highlighted by our teachers, but it really trans, it really translates to every position that we have in this district. We have an employee assistance program, proud of it. We actually had it for about 10, brought it back for about 10 years now. It came back actually after the recession, ironically, because we actually, before the recession, eliminated it because of funding. But then after the, during the recession, we also realized that it was hurting us because our employees did not have any place to go, and they were coming to human resources. And we, that's not as confidential, that's not the confidential conversation that you have. And we're not professionals at doing that. So the board was able to support us in repurposing or bringing back EAP about 10 years ago. And I just want to give you some of the numbers that have, that we've seen more recently to give you some idea kind of into the COVID sphere. And you could see the breakdown there of gender in FY 20 and FY 21. You can see where FY 21 went up, and you can see how those numbers are. Now FY 22 is only six months. What I'm going to try to dig, I don't, I just got to figure it out, is, is that six months meaning that every year, we usually have more on this, the back half? Which would, you know, which might make sense that, you know, you're, when you talk about burnout, you're talking about burnout, okay, is it that second half? So you make it through the first semester, it's the second semester that really causes it to go up. So we're going to do some digging into the, into the data to kind of see if that's what's there. But this just gives you a perspective of where it is, where it was, and kind of the height when we were in the pandemic of all the services of our employees. Now, I do often wonder, because I always have, every time we do a survey, an employee says, well, is it confidential? Is it really confidential? So I think there are some employees that may not go to EAP because they think that the school system is going to find out about it, my supervisor will find out about it. And so I am glad from that standpoint that the state is doing something because that is another resource that we could send. Okay, if you're not comfortable, you're worried about the confidentiality coming to, to ours, then go to the one that the state has. It's still free. So this will be another resource for us, and hopefully, you know, many of our employees that were apprehensive, if they were, or on the other side of it, you could get six counseling services with us and get six counseling services with the state. So, you know, that's another way to look at it as well for our employees to get that same professional counselor and have all of those different visits. And these are some, these are the reasons, primary reasons that you see. Substance abuse, psychological. Superintendent's always says, you know, we're a microcosm of, we, we are a community. We have 43,000. Think about it, we're a city. Everything that goes on in a city, we have in our school district. And so, so when I hear things, when people are surprised about, well, this teacher did this, or this employee did this, it shouldn't be, we're representative of the community. And, and within every community, there are things that happen that, that are not so good, and with every community, there are things that happen that are good. But the vast majority of what we do is, you know, the latter of what is good. It's just that we, we do represent the community, and so we have all of those issues that come with that. And so this was the takeaways from the vendor. As far as 60% plus of, of the problems were stress, work conflict, family issues. I, you know, want to point out those general titles, general work stress reported, meaning that either, either employee feels overburdened with the workload or struggling with performance issues. Personal conflict reported, employees are experiencing conflict with their direct supervisor or a coworker, which is producing stress on the job, home life. Burnout, as they defined it, is the vendor. Typically, teachers, these teachers express a lack of support and tend to feel overwhelmed by student and parent, difficult parents. All of those things that the teacher has to deal with. You know, we, we don't really think about that. This is what I, these are what our teachers and all of our staff, but in particular, our teachers are dealing with every day. And it depends on what's coming at them. All these different things come at them. That's why surprising, you know, EAP is right, why don't other school teachers have it? That's why the state needs to do this. Because if you don't, then you don't have that mechanism of being able to work it out. I mean, that's kind of what you have to do when you're thinking about the definition of burnout. It's, you're something you have to work through. If you, sometimes you can work through it yourself, you can work through it with somebody, but you have to work through it, and professionals can help you work through that. But if you don't have that opportunity to be able to even talk with them, like in most districts, then, you know. Yes.
Especially from number two, where you've got conflicts that are within colleagues or supervisors. What is our conflict resolution process to address those types of issues?
We have trained mediators in the district. Rob Gordon, Axie Doreen, which works into, under Bryan as well, as, as may come about. But when we have conflict, they're brought to human resources, and we try to mediate those situations. Some of it's done at the principal's level. If it's colleague, if it's coworker to coworker, it's going to be done at the principal's level, but it can be, can be elevated as well. Do we need to work on that more? Yes, we need to work on that more, I will admit that, we need to work harder than that. But our associate superintendents do a good job of being able to filter those and having them come to them as well. We have many different layers of support because they are, they were principals, they understood what's going on, and so the associate superintendents help at that level as well to be able to filter some of those and to support the, the staff as they're having these conflicts. And then there's just sometimes we have to move people. You know, we give people a second chance, and that happens from time to time. We will, we will move employees and give them a second We will, we will move employees and give them a second chance. And that is always something that we, we want to do is give people an opportunity to succeed. And then there are other times when, you know, we just don't know. We just know these two employees are conflicting for whatever reason. And, you know, that's, that could just be life. And, you know, we, we accept that we can't make everybody, like Dr. said, like I said, you don't come to work to love, to be, love you. You know, you find love at home. But we expect people to work together and then sometimes when that doesn't, we have to work through those processes to get them in the place that they can be productive. Yes.
I think the district has started some of this and I would definitely support more of it on, on number three that, and difficult parents. And I would love to see the burnout numbers for those first couple of years, because I think that's where we probably would have that highest peak. And that's why the, the, the teacher at 32 years has, has dealt with enough difficult parents and was like, you know what, whatever, I'll keep, I, I know how to do this, I've been doing it. And it doesn't, you know, it's water off a duck's back for, for that 32-year veteran. But for a, a first or second or third year teacher, um, students difficult, we can work a ton on classroom management. That, that difficult parent side, I think is, has grown this past year. I know I've heard it and I'm sure the rest of you have, that how much are we helping to educate our teachers on divisive policy? And on the, on the parents' bill of rights, some of the stuff that the state has shoved down to us that have worried them now. Like, so you want me to do all these things, but you also want to be in my classroom and really force stuff on top of me? Um, and I think that there is a, a new level of stress there in some of those policies. So I hope that we're trying to do as much as we can to ease their minds, but also to help alleviate some of that at the administrative level of the school. But then to help those administrators that are going to have to deal with it at the administrative level of the district.
If I, if I could just make a comment, I, just yesterday morning, I got a call from a teacher who feels like she's under attack. And we've seen this continue to grow. And they feel helpless, they feel like their principals can't help them, their superintendent can't help them, their board members can't help them. Because they are constantly receiving threats. And they feel like, why, why should I come someplace where I can't be protected? We're hearing from them directly, we're hearing from their spouses, their parents, they're feeling under attack. And because of all the issues that we all can identify happening out in society, the unfettered, uh, management or the, the, them feeling, parents feeling like, I can say anything I want to to you because you are the teacher. I can come into the school building, I can threaten the principal, I can threaten you, I can harass you. I put all this stuff on social media, which damages their reputation, since they do have reputations. And I'm sure they want to preserve them. But they are feeling under attack. And I think that's probably one of the things that is also a driving force of teachers feeling like, I'm not getting any protection. And I'm doing my very best, but because some of these parents are lined up and they have, um, support from others, then what they do is they go in and it, it really is very challenging. Everybody understands having a difficult stakeholder. But enough is enough. And we, we're going to have to stand together and just say, it's not acceptable for you to do that. They don't know if the person who's attacking them by email really doesn't wish to cause them harm. Some of the threats are really unbelievable and they have great support. Or it appears that they have support. But that is something just yesterday morning I dealt with. And we seem to have more and more of it. Now, when the pandemic was really in rate, you know, in its form, we got a lot of it, myself included. But I'm seeing, seeing more of that with the individual teacher around grades, around, you didn't put my child in the seat that she wanted to be in, um, just all kinds of things that indicate there's something awry. So we don't really know of how we can protect them and we should be working on that. Because we also don't want them not to feel that we recognize what's happening. And many of us are copied on these communications.
Is there or should there be, and maybe just in the district level, a teacher bill of rights? That we as a district support? And it might just be some statements, but it definitely is something for us to look back on and go, this is how we are going to support our teachers against that type of rhetoric.
That's part of the homework.
That's part of the homework. Okay, here's my idea. Okay, here's my idea.
That's on your homework.
Did you have that ready by you?
Yeah, Mr. Martin.
So David, I, I want you to be here, I want you to hear this from me. I agree with you.
That'll only be like the one person in the room.
You know, one thing that we did at a school that I'm not going to date, um, all of our board members, when we received that kind of communication from parents, the phrase that we always use was, we stand by our teachers. And as soon as parents understand, we stand by our teachers. And, um, and, and, you know, of course, there is, you know, there's a system in there, if we have a real complaint, we will walk you through that and understand, we stand by our teachers. And also, if it gets to a point of threatening, no, we will take this stance. Because our teachers are there and parents need understanding. We love our children, we stand by our children.
Excellent. Ms. Hall?
Just very quickly, something that I learned very early on as a new principal, under the experiencing difficulty with the direct supervisor. I had a relatively new teacher come to me one day and say, um, my name is, that was Ms. Houston. Ms. Houston, you don't seem to like all of your teachers the same. You seem to really like a certain amount of them, but like I'm going to feel that you don't really notice me, you don't, you know. And that taught me luckily that was the lesson I learned very early on. And Sherry, you might comment on this. I started kind of having an open door policy where I planned intentionally for each one of my teachers to have time with me at some point during each semester. So that I had that personal contact and interest in them. Because as humans, you know, yeah, you see somebody come every day and they work hard and the kids are always good. Oh, you, you like them, you know, they're making your life easier. But what it looks like coming outside is you're playing favorites and you're not giving your attention and your, your, uh, recognition to all of your staff. So I think if our principals kind of made that an open door policy where teachers are welcome and expected to come in and work with principals, you know, and not just wait till something happens or some parent complains and then, you know. Would you agree that that?
I mean, I would definitely agree with that. I mean, we say that the foundations of our classroom are relationships. I think you can extend that higher and say the foundations of the functioning in the building are the relationships that teachers are able to create with their administrators and vice versa. So that you have that open dialogue, you have that shared decision-making. You have those safe places where your voice can be heard, where you feel like someone is invested in your growth. And each teacher has their, that individual path, their, their individual interest in, in ways in which they want to grow. They have their individual, I, I, um, I don't want, I don't like to use the word weaknesses, but there are areas that, that they struggle with. And not turning those into something that they are evaluated on, but there's something, is opportunities. And when you can go to an administrator and talk openly and honestly about that and feel like you have someone that's got your back, that's invested in you, who you can speak with just so freely, that is, that dials your stress level back. So, uh, relationships are the foundation for everything.
Okay, thank you.
So before I close, I want to, I want to, I want to point out something. And I wanted to say this so that you have, you can think about this as you're thinking about everything else you're doing. Millennials. 40% of our teaching staff are millennials. Over 1,100 of our current teachers are millennials. 540 of our classified staff, about 35, 30% are millennials. About 32% of our total staff are millennials. They have a different thought process. So as we're thinking about what we're doing and we're, we're planning, it's different and we have to be able to reflect on that. I mean, fortunately for me, I have a, one of my directors is a millennial. And we do have conversations about, I'll, I'll even ask them, I'll say, what do you think about this? Because it's different. It's not wrong, it's just different. It's just different. So that's something we all have to remember and that's growing. That's, you know, those millennials find those born between 1981 and 1996. So, uh, got to remember that as we're doing whatever we're doing. And that's, that's my closing. Thank you.
Exactly, you have the greatest generation.
You have some questions, Mr. Ray? You have some questions, Mr. Mr. Cashmore and Dr. Howard Hall?
I'd just like to share this and I can call the school name and the principal, she's gone. But one of the closest relationships that, and the bond that I've ever had at a school was under Annie P. Wimber at Georgetown Elementary. At the beginning of the year, we had a retreat out of town and our relationship was so close and it was just a bond that we all had.
Thank you.
I, I have to tell you, Tanya, when I first came to Armstrong and she was down there, that school was new and having some real serious problems. And I took students in to observe there and she had classical music playing in the halls and you could have heard a pin drop. And before that, it had been like bomb city in, in Georgetown. And it's just simple putting the music that was soothing there.
Mr. Cashmore?
Uh, Mr. Cashmore?
Is this our discussion period involving Mr. Ray's comments and Ms. Goldman's?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, well, I wanted to first say, I mean, I do H R for a living, I do employment law. I deal with lots of clients who have recruiting and retention issues. And I just wanted to compliment Mr. Ray and our human resources group. They are, I hate the cliche, thinking outside the box, but they're, they're way beyond the box. They're in the triangle and the. We do, we do a lot of things in this district for recruiting and retention and, you know, thank you for doing that. Thinking about, you know, what we heard today, a lot of what was painted up there and what we're doing are things that we're adding, we're offering, uh, resources. But a lot of the cause of the burnout are things we are currently doing. And, you know, Dr. Brigham's comment about a teacher's bill of rights is, is appropriate. We, we talk a lot though. I think we really need to focus on what are we currently doing that we can not do or change? And thinking about the report from the task force, thinking about some of the comments Mr. Ray, um, has shared. And then thinking about, I mean, I've been on the board a long time now relatively. And, and the overarching thing I hear from a lot of teachers is, I'm a 20-year experience teacher with a master's degree and I feel like I'm being treated like a seven-year-old. I have no discretion over my schedule, I have no discretion over how I teach. I don't have time to exercise my professionalism and independent judgment. And thinking about how we got to that point, some of it is the feds tell the states, if you want money, here are benchmarks you have to hit. So the states say, okay, local districts, here's the things you need to do. We hire a superintendent and say, here are the performance metrics you need to hit. All right, so what does a superintendent do? And I'm, I'm not focusing on Dr. Levett, any district does this. Leader, here are the metrics you need to hit. Leader says, okay, I'm going to tell my subordinates, here are the metrics I need to hit. Here's what you need to do to go get them done. So what do the subordinates do? They go to the principals and say, here are the metrics you need to hit. And human nature is, if I'm being held accountable for something, I'm going to micromanage the people under me to make sure it's getting done. So how do we as a board say, hey, you 20-year teacher, whose, whose students have produced scores above average for 20 years, why are we making that teacher jump through all the same hoops as the first-year teacher who needs micromanaging and training? You know, can we do things differently now to tell a teacher, we respect you, you're a professional, you have a track record of accomplishment, we're going to lessen the micromanaging? And that's a scary thing for the superintendent and her staff that we are holding accountable. So we as a board have to decide, we're going to institute a level of trust, knowing that in 6% of those cases, there is going to be a disaster. But the other side of that is, we're, we're treating teachers and professional staff as the professionals they are and we're not micromanaging. And, and that, a lot of the burnout comments I heard go back to, you know, that, let me be me within the confines of what I need to do as a professional. And there's a tension there that I don't know how to, how to resolve. But some of the stuff that we're looking at, you know, in terms of the teacher bill of rights, maybe we can think about some of those things.
So I'm going to invite you to go back to March 13th of 2020. When there were districts across this state that said, the children are going home, you don't have to do anything. I said this at the convocation. We did not do that. We trusted our teachers. It was not always pretty, but for the most part, teachers got in there and they did probably more work. They were working from home, in their kitchens, worried about their own health and circumstances, and they kept at it. They were creative, they engaged our students. It wasn't perfect, but it was better than nothing. And you know what? While we may not have gotten everything we wanted, our teachers rose to the occasion. And that's why it's personal when people sit and lambast them, because they have no idea about how much work they did. But I'm proud of the fact that we as a district said, teachers, we trust you. We're going to give you some guidance, but we trust you to engage with the students every day. So we've done it, Mr. Cashmore. The key is, will we deliberately do it again? And I think we have the opportunity to do it. We do a lot of things in H R and across the district that are not mapped out. We experiment, we run up the flagpole, if it works, we keep it up there. If it doesn't work, we break it down and tweak it and try it again. So we've got the expertise. I think we need to move into the 21st century and respect the people who've been at the university, have great experience and allow them to do their jobs and not hang their hat, and we hang our hat on one, uh, test period. There are lots of miracles happening every day and I think we need to go back to that time period. And let's do it in a structured manner. I would like to see that happen because our teachers will rise to the occasion and they will tell us, they talk to each other. Remember, I have a daughter who's a teacher. They know who is the weak link and they also know how to support those persons. So I think we, we have the opportunity to do it and I'd like for us to move in that direction. To create a new way to define success. It doesn't mean we give people a pass, it simply means we try to respect the expertise that we invite into our classrooms every day. We entrust them to take care of our children and they do more than babysitting. So thank you for raising that. So here's your yellow sheet. And we'll be looking for some good suggestions tomorrow. Yes, ma'am?
I certainly appreciate the yellow sheet and I've been looking at it. But I, I'm not the one that knows the answers to these, Ms. Goldman and her colleagues are. And, and so I'm, I'm very grateful for how that list of the top 12 districts. But I mean, I think that that's, and maybe it's just because of the time when I came into office, that I wasn't able to get to know my schools that I didn't already know well or whatever and I'm looking forward to that. But I feel like as a board member, I do need to hear that. And I've been so grateful that we have things like a professional sense. But I don't feel like I have enough information as a board member to know what those policies are that we do need to change. And so I'm really looking forward to hearing that voice. I don't know if there's some, you know, and I know as she gave the report and you mentioned that we're doing a lot of these things already. I would love to see kind of an assessment of where we feel like. I would love to see kind of an assessment of where we feel like we are and, and obviously that should include some. And I don't know if any of that can be work that's done in advance of, of the Carl Lentz Institute. And I definitely think there's a lot of value of having to kind of outside organization facilitate that. So, um, I will give this my best, but I, I have been put in.
Well, I'm sure you have a teacher.
Uh, yes, I have many teachers I can talk to, but I wanna hear that collective voice.
Well, and we're not laying it at your feet because we have plenty of ideas about what we can do to make things better. The thing about it is sometimes our ideas about how to give teachers relief has to be balanced with your role as a policymaker. So, I mean, I can bring a recommendation that we teach four days a week and we have one day for teachers to have planning.
Yes.
And, you know, that sounds, that sounds wonderful. I don't think we'll have one, any of our thirty-five hundred teachers who wouldn't want that. But then, on the political side, we have to deal with that. So as an elected official, you have to deal with that piece of it. So our thinking is, everybody thinks they have a solution. We're just suggesting that if you think that there's a solution that we haven't considered, put it out there. Um, but I think it's time for us to think about how we retain. We retain people by recognizing, respecting what they do, but also recognizing that there is more and more and more laid at the feet of the teacher. We're expecting them to do everything. And at some point, we're going to have to balance that out. A good number of our employees are mature in their profession and they can leave. So we want to think about, and we do it every month, we talk with our teachers and get feedback from them. Some of the things that they suggest, I'm thinking, I don't know how I can sell that part. But there are also some suggestions that they make that are really, really solid suggestions. But we have to have the support of the elected officials in order to make those things happen. Dr. Buck has his hand up and then Mr. Johnson.
And, and I'm gonna sound really cynical and old when I say this. But, you know, there are some teachers in our district who have completed ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, thirty years, who shouldn't have been there one year, by my book. And I'm from a family of teachers, but there are some teachers in our district, as in any district, who think that they're doing us a wonderful privilege by appearing every day. And we are not to ask anything from them because they have been chosen to teach. And I say that only because we have thousands that are wonderful. But some of the, some of the information, data, I think is skewed by teachers that have not ever been happy. And maybe they're unhappy with their spouse, and maybe they're unhappy with their kids, or their church, or their preacher, or their whatever. But they take it out on the district and the kids and the principal and the other teachers because they're just unhappy with their lives. I'm done.
Not a problem. We're, we're gonna hear from Mr. Johnson and then we're gonna wrap up here.
Dr. Levett, you said that sometimes the teachers come out, come give you ideas and suggestions that you don't know if you can sell to us. I would still love to hear those suggestions.
I just gave you one. They said they think we should work four-day weeks and have one day.
But I mean, and that's, that's fantastic, but as a whole, like when we come to these kind of retreats, where we can have these open and honest discussions. And I think that this is the time where we need to hear those kinds of suggestions and really ask not, is it viable for our district? Is it something that we can, that we can put into place? And if not, we figure out why we can't do it and we're able to go back to the teachers and explain to them. So they, the teachers know that the board has actually heard, heard them. Which they know that they have the support and that we were attempting to look at their suggestions to make it feasible, if it is feasible.
We're inviting all the senate meetings? That's what we're hearing, these corrected senate meetings, I'm guessing, correct?
Right.
Yeah, we have an open invitation to all of those, correct?
Right. The invitation is extended to board members to come to the senate meeting. We generally advertise those well in advance and some persons have been able to join us over the years and others may not have been able to join us. Um, they, you are usually, people are very excited when you're able to join us. And as Mrs. Goldman and Mrs., Ms. Frazier can attest to, there are no holes barred on those conversations. So they have very, very strong suggestions and our professional senate reports to us each month that they meet. So I think there's, there are also some suggestions there as well, but we'll definitely bring those to you. This is an opportunity for you to share whatever thoughts you might have. And if you don't have any, we understand that, but we also wanna make sure that we are hearing from everyone. It's a serious issue and I think the more we hear, the more we're gonna be able to come up with something that will really allow us to see some reduction in those concerns among our staff. Okay. Thank you for your attention. We are ready to... Thank you, Ms. Goldman. So we wanna look at, um, in my, um, email to you about topics, I suggested that we needed to have a collective understanding. And we had some references, references to it a little bit earlier. Collective understanding of the young people who come before us every day to, um, to get prepared for the future. And one point that I will make and I'll continue to make, and I made it to the press, um, the other day, so I'll repeat it today. We do not have the luxury, nor do we want it, to reject students simply because they do not meet a standard. We recognize that the young people who walk into our doors are there with us for about six hours a day. And if we are fortunate, they're with us a hundred and eighty days a year. Six hours a day, if you do your eureka math, you know is only one quarter of the day. If you do your eureka math, you know that one hundred and eighty days, if they are present, all days, is less than one half of the year. Young people are born into a social network and not the kindness on Facebook. They're born into a network and their performance in school is influenced in ways outside of the teacher. We live in a community, as Mr. Ray said earlier. Our school district of thirty-seven thousand students and fifty-six hundred employees is indicative of the community in which we live. So those ills that we may see on TV affect our children. And they bring that into our classrooms. And our teachers and our staff deal with that. They can come in August, they can come in September, they can come in April. And we welcome them whenever they come. They can come like Ms. Tookes and reading and saying her ABCs and singing. Or they can come like my little friend that I met on Friday, who's five years old and only knows his first name. Does not know his last name. Ms. Tookes, her first name, your first name, write a dissertation at three. So whenever they come, we accept them and we do what we can to move them along. If they've had, um, a situation where there was domestic violence overnight, or if there have been, if there's been a shooting in the neighborhood, or maybe they've been able to go out and play their game and not be distracted. Whatever they have, we welcome them. Maybe they have a toothache, but they don't have health insurance. Maybe they are living in the car. But then maybe their parents have moved to this area because they now have an executive jobs in the area. And so their dilemma is deciding which home they're going to buy. We have them all. So I think it's important for us to have a collective understanding of who it is that we serve. And so we've asked, uh, Ms. Drought and Ms. Frazier to join us today and talk a little bit about, um, who our students are. And so I'm gonna ask you to join me in welcoming them as they come forward to just share with you exactly who it is that we're serving every day.
Good afternoon. So I get the pleasure of actually setting the stage for these two phenomenal educators by starting with my favorite picture this year, hashtag because of you. It is truly a feel-good. Okay, Dr. Buck referenced this in his opening comments about that million-word gap. And so if you look here, this is that research that shows, the new research, that shows the different numbers of words kids will have heard by age five. And it's based on how often parents read to them. And just to show you how glaring some of this is, if you're in a household where someone has never read to you, then you will probably hear four thousand six hundred and sixty-two words by age five, as opposed to someone who's reading daily to you and you've been exposed to two hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred and sixty words. And it's important to know that there's a difference between the kind of vocabulary our kids hear in day-to-day life and the kind that they're exposed to when you read to them. Those are two different types of vocabulary for many of our students. Okay, so I wanna remind you that Georgia Code twenty-two dash six-nine-zero-point-one is our compulsory attendance law. And it says that required school attendance begins at first grade. Age six, that is when students are required to attend school. So just wanna share with you what some of our first-grade teachers actually face when the doors are open and they embrace all of our students with their diverse backgrounds. You have here, I went to work with my mom every day. I attended a private daycare, pre-K and kindergarten. I was homeschooled by mom. My grandmother kept me. I went to Head Start, but not to pre-K or to K. And the list goes on. And what you will find is that over the next two days, we are going to continue to bring forth the differences that you will see our children experience before they ever come in the schoolhouse. Then, on tomorrow, we will dig deeper and share with you what some of those experiences are, even while they are in our care and what happens when they go home. And so while we embrace the diversity of each child that comes into our classroom and we actually, we love them, we take care of them, we educate them, we recognize it does prevent some challenges as well as opportunities for us ensuring that these students are reading by, on grade level, by grade three. And so now with that said, our two phenomenal educators, Ms. Frazier, I am so not going to attempt the first, I'm gonna give it a shot. Benikana? Benikana. Kurt, by the way, you were right, we were wrong. So, Ms. Frazier and Ms. Drought are actually gonna walk you through what the day in the lives of our classrooms look like for our teachers and our students from our three-year-old program all the way to third grade.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you so much for allowing me to come, um, talk to you about my favorite subject, pre-K. Um, I can talk all day about pre-K, but I'll, I'll keep it short. I wanna tell you a quick story about what this district means to me and talk, piggybacking on being a family. Um, I was a veteran teacher at Hodge Elementary School. Um, this young teacher shows up, you know, her first year teaching. She's right out of the Georgia Bulldog, so she sets her classroom up and we're all watching her. And, you know, my kids were at Georgia at the time, so I stopped by to introduce myself to her. And, and here we are. You know, we still have a relationship. But we still have a relationship. Anytime I go to Hess, I poke my head in, she's still got her Georgia Bulldog outside the classroom. But to me, that's what being part of this school district is about, is building these relationships and, and helping each other. I get calls all the time, you know, hey, Ms. Drought, you helped me one time. You know, and it makes me feel good and I really enjoy it. So anyway, when Mr. Feliciano called me, uh, a few months ago, um, I had no idea what I was getting into with this three-year-old program. But very excited, um, it, it has started with great success. Um, we couldn't have found a better teacher to be in this classroom. She is phenomenal. Um, she has a three-year-old and a four-year-old, so she really knows what she's doing. She's got day-to-day experience with this. Uh, it, it, and I go by, I'm, I'm trying to go by every other day just to offer her support. Um, Ms. James, who works with me, goes by, we visit her, we spend a lot of time. And it's go, it's so successful. Matter of fact, they're doing better than some of my four-year-olds. I mean, these three-year-olds have really settled in and it's, she's just been phenomenal. Um, so as I talk about a typical day in pre-K, I'm also gonna be talking about the three-year-olds because we did base the three-year-old schedule, um, on the four-year-olds. They do move a little more, you know, they can't sit quite as long, but they can do the same thing with the four-year-olds. So a typical day in pre-K, when I think about pre-K, if you guys have ever raved, um, where you're visiting a school and you walk into a pre-K classroom, that should be a happy place. You should hear laughter. It should be loud. Sometimes I won't kid, I have to stop and think that myself, you know. It should be loud, there should be movement. You know, these children, this is the one time of their school life they can come to school and, and play. They're learning through play, but they're playing. They don't know they're learning. They're not tested. There's no test results, there's no data basically for them. We are here to learn, we're here to mature socially, emotionally, and have fun. And I tell my teachers that, if you're not having fun in pre-K, you might, you know, need to look at another grade, kindergarten, because this should be fun. I, I remember teaching and thinking, when I started, you know, doing the hokey pokey, I'm thinking, Dr. Locken is paying you to do this? Wow, this was fun. I had four teenagers at the time, so it was really a treat to come work with these four-year-olds. But a typical day in the three-year-old and the four-year-old life, they come into the school and the teacher intentionally has activities set up for them. It may look like they're just playing, but these are intentional activities. They come in, they get their breakfast, they eat, you know, some of them eat at, in the classroom, some of them eat in the cafeteria. They work on their little math manipulatives or draw a picture in the morning. She then moves them onto the large carpet where they, um, they have their literacy, their large group meeting. They're a family, come together. You know, did anything happen yesterday you'd like to talk about? Believe me, all twenty-two of them will have a story. But this is the, the time that they connect in the morning. Where are we headed today? You know, she has the message board, you know, here's what's going on today. So it's where they group, where they come together as a family. She may have music and movement during that time, a story time. Um, you know, your phonemic awareness, your phonological awareness activities. That is all happening, I'm sorry, that is all happening during this carpet time. This is a big portion of our day. You wanna talk about regrouping? When they pulled those big carpets out of our classroom through the pandemic, the pre-K teachers were like, woo, what? They had to regroup. But we have the carpets back. So then maybe they'll move on, because we really balance our schedule with child-initiated and teacher-initiated activities. Um, they may move on then to center time. Center time is one hour of uninterrupted play. This is where they go to their centers. They get to choose where they play. That's where it gets loud. It looks like chaos is controlled chaos. It has, she, like I said, there's intentional activities in each center. They, they have a plan when they head there. You know, we, we, you have Johnny who likes blocks and he likes cars. Well, she may let him take his cars to the paint center and paint with his cars. There's a lot that goes on in center time. You should see teacher and parent engage with the children. They should be playing with them, talking to them. This is where a lot of our assessment happens. Because we're getting that one-on-one with the... because we're getting that one-on-one with these children. She may move, and I know I've already messed up this whole thing. All right, center time. Then she may pull them back. We do Eureka Math in pre-K. My teachers tell me that they definitely see a difference using Eureka Math. The kindergarten teachers are saying they're seeing a difference. So we have 20 to 30 minutes of a large group and small group Eureka Math. They'll move on, maybe to some recess. They have 30 minutes of, you know, free play. They can go outside. The teacher, I used to, you know, throw footballs. You know, you'll see the pre-K teachers engage with the children. They shouldn't be sitting in chairs. We tell them, you know, get up, get engaged. Because that's where you get to know them is in this downtime. I used to hear, I taught at Varden City, I used to hear about the West Side Whippers. That was the football team. So that's the time to get engaged with the children. Then they may move on to a small group and this could cover, you know, your literacy, your social studies, your science. They can do anything in that small group. That's a small group that can cover all the domains. They'll have a one hour of, I keep saying, one hour of nap time. That includes cleaning and setting up. You like that? The teachers do too. Because if they, hey, if they ever call me about a behavior problem is he won't sleep. But we do, and our policy is if they don't take a nap, we provide them with quiet activities. We'll have a basket of books, something quiet. They have two story times per day, intentional story times. The teacher, you know, has a goal of why she's teaching this book. They have large group literacy. That's where we do puppet shows, group writing lessons, reading books, big books, you know, so they can see the sentence segmenting and everything that goes on in literacy. That happens during that time. We have, end of the day with a closing activity where we bring the children back to the large group and we once again talk about what happened today. You know, what happened, what made you laugh? Or just any kind of closing activity to bring the day. She may, you know, she may prepare them. Tomorrow is picture day, so our schedule will be off tomorrow because those little guys don't like their schedule messed up. So it's a closing activity to end the day before we send them home to their parents. And that's a typical day of pre-K. You know, busy. Somebody asked me yesterday, "When's the downtime?" There is no downtime. Because if you have downtime in pre-K, there are bad things happen. You want to keep those guys, you know, active, involved, and, you know, rotating through all the various activities during the day. So now we're going to move on to kindergarten. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Frazier for help. Typically, kindergarten is handled at the schools. The principals do kindergarten. I do get some calls every once in a while about kindergarten questions and I typically will go to a principal or to a veteran kindergarten teacher. But once again, kindergarten, you know, the same thing. They come in, they, the teacher, they eat their breakfast and she has a morning activity. They have bigger blocks, as you can see, where in pre-K, we move fast. We jump from one activity to the other. And their blocks are longer. They have a writing and balanced literacy. They'll move into a math block. They'll have lunch. They'll have an unstructured break, recess. They have science, social studies. They have their fine arts and their instructional focus of the day. They also have specials. Some, every school calls it something different, but their art and their PE and all the fun things that they get to do. Some schools do allow pre-K to participate in specials. You know, it's just a core, and I think it based, you know, yeah, it's probably enrollment. If it's a larger school, they're not able to fit the pre-K in there. Yeah.
Yeah, and God bless our parents who fill in sometimes as the art teacher and as the music teacher and our support staff, filling the gaps to help our general ed teachers to provide enrichment opportunities for all of our students. But particularly when you start getting into the K8s where it's almost like two schools in one, it's just really hard for those connections teachers to see all of those grade levels like that within a day.
Okay, so I, we are, let's go back to that slide with the speech bubbles. I don't want to be, yeah, there we go. So what's not listed here, but that's just as important, that students and teachers have to face every day, is poverty, disabilities, abuse, trauma, and emotional distress. But you all, and I saw y'all, devoured your smart food, yes? And I hope you didn't throw away the lovely laminated card because all of our students enter our classrooms at the same starting line. But each will reach the finish line in their own time. As educators, we meet each student where they are. We're primed and ready, though, for the celebration of them reaching the finish line of success. So our students are like the delicious popcorn kernels that you devoured today. And it says popcorn is prepared in the same pot, in the same heat, in the same oil, and yet the kernels do not pop at the same time. So effective educators don't compare. You never compare. You can't compare student to student. You can't compare classes to classes. You can't definitely compare year to year because it's about having a growth mindset, being foundationally cemented in the fact that I want those students to be different and better by the time they leave me. And if they've done that, if they are better little humans, then I've done my job. So let's talk about first grade. First grade is a dynamic primary grade. First grade is a doozy, y'all. Because remember when we said that kindergarten is not mandatory? Remember when we said that some of our students may not have had the lovely acorn experience, may not have had a pre-K experience? For some of our first-grade students, first grade is their first time in what we like to call the big school, okay? It's not going to Mimi's house. It's not the lovely lady from church who keeps me. No, it is real school with a bookbag, with homework, with, you know, structured breaks, no nap time. So your first-grade teachers are heroes. I'm a former first-grade teacher. It is work, but we love it. So here, I am not going to read. I expect you, I'm gonna hold you accountable for reading, so we do with the students, right? We have to remember that this grade, with all of that, still has set expectations. And so we have a wonderful, wonderful curriculum instruction department and academic affairs department that have worked with our teachers to say, "What are those power standards that our first-grade students need to master so that they are productive and ready for the next grade?" So when they come into first grade, it's great if they have these. But some of these are foundational standards that we build over the course of the year. So first grade, they're expected to begin to put the pieces of the reading puzzle together so that they can read independently. The goal is about getting kids excited about reading and getting them inquisitive about math. You do some great science along the way. You do some wonderful, everything's social. Everything is social studies. But the true pinnacle of first grade is being an independent reader. That is the goal. So first grade is so heavy, y'all. It's got two slides. It's a lot. But you'll notice, and if I go back, you'll notice here, this second one, it's recalling characters, setting in the basic plot of a story, identifying your coins by name, which in 2022 is very interesting because how many kids actually deal with change? We're dealing with Bitcoin and a digital, you know, so it's currency and stuff. It's different. Recognizing and sorting to these shapes, reading your basic sight words taught in kindergarten. Well, you don't know that if you've never been to kindergarten. So the plight of the teacher is very heavy. The bookbag of the first-grade student is very heavy, but we press on. So that's why a day in the life of a first-grader, and you can think back to your experience in first grade. I hope it was positive. If it wasn't, I'd give free hugs. First grade is a jam-packed day of early literacy, foundational math, and influential social lessons. And this day may look different depending upon what school you go to because, but most schools follow the pattern and follow the research that says you maximize your morning time because students are awake, they are alert, and they are ready. Post-lunch and especially post-recess, you can still teach and effective teachers still teach, but it's, they're dwindling on you. They're fading on you. Because remember, we don't have nap time in big school, okay? Your teachers need nap time too. How do we maximize those early literacy standards in first grade? Well, most schools have them reading as soon as they come in the door. At their, what they call it, a warning bell or when they're coming in the hallway, grab a book. You got your drop everything and read time. You got your free independent time. You're catching up on reading. You're getting kids excited about book. And those are books in their hands and digital books and experiences as well. Their morning is filled with balanced literacy. And there is a balanced approach to that. And it's, we can go real deep about, you know, just what's going on right now in literacy and how people are up in uproar, the new wave of the science of reading. But good teachers know that bandwagons roll up, but students and teaching is still the same. How do you teach a student how to read? Practice. How do you teach a student how to count? Practice. Practice makes permanent. So we want to make sure the things that we're practicing are intentional and effective so that we get the most bang for our buck. So that balanced literacy is filled with a workshop model where that teacher is teaching a mini lesson that's followed by a rotational block where they're moving through rotating stations. And there's a lot of differentiation from the time those students walk in the door to the time they leave. And this is first through third, okay? Differentiation drives what we do as educators. And where does that data come from? From diagnostic assessments, from having a seat and listening to you read a story, from your running records, from all of that. But that's what tells me that little Johnny still doesn't recognize the letter Q. And so we're gonna work on Q on Tuesday when he comes in. And this student needs this help. That's what drives what they do. And so of course, a typical day for a primary student is going to be filled with lunch. Well, all of them will say lunch is the best subject of the day. We have been talking about how lunch is not a subject, but they'll talk, they love lunch. But notice how that timeframe is now more structured because there are set expectations from our state and what we've established as a curriculum that we follow. But then I want to tell you that there's the hidden curriculum that every teacher knows that we have to deal with. How to get along with your friends, how to share, how to talk to each other, conflict resolution, you know, how to deal with having a bad day. It's okay to be upset, but you don't hit. You know, these types of things, that is happening in first grades all over our district. It's happening. And to clarify, when we see the instructional focus block, this, schools call this different things. Some call it flex, some call it intervention. But this is, as I was talking about, that data-driven instruction. This is where our students receive their special pull-out services, their gifted services, their EIP services, their SPED services. And those groups are split. So if you go and observe and they say it's flex time or it's intervention time, those students are getting their instructional level. As teachers and as students, we ride down that road of success in two waves. And in order to get to reading on grade level by third grade, we have to address both. On one side, you have your grade-level instruction. That is what we have to address and what we have to deal with because when they get to third grade, they are going to take a grade-level assessment, okay? It's not differentiated for them. It's a grade-level assessment on grade level. So I have to teach you here. You may not be there yet, but I'm gonna expose you and I'm gonna scaffold for you and I'm going to help you to get there. And the more I do it, what I said, some of those popcorns are gonna start popping. Like, oh, yeah, oh, that's what that is? Oh, that's a factor? Oh, okay, that's division? Okay. It'll come. But then on the other side, there's a child's instructional level. And the data tells me, we have a lovely platform, I Ready, that this group of students, they're two grade levels behind. So I work with those students where they are. But if I don't deal with the grade-level instruction too and I put all my eggs in this basket, when they take that assessment, are they gonna be ready? No. Now, there's no perfect world, but what research says and what we've seen over time is when we focus on both and we give teachers time to plan effectively to reach those two different levels, our students grow. And that's what we want. So, let's see. Let's talk about second grade. Second grade is what I consider to be the primary gateway. Y'all figure that out. I'm gonna keep talking. Students are working to, I'm a teacher, I'm like, this is dead time. We gotta keep going. My mom was on radio, 13 years, you know, no dead, no dead air, okay? Gotta keep talking. Students in grade two are working to build their confidence, right? They're big kids now, right? And they're beginning the transition from learning to read to reading to learn. They're not there independently yet. And also think about developmentally where you were in second grade. You're not there yet, right? You're not all the way. Can't let you go. We're still gonna hold your hand. But there's more. We have to get you ready for what we know is coming in third grade. So your literacy skills are more focused. They're also more aligned to what's coming. This is where we start to see the parallel in our standards that all grade levels are asking and answering questions. All grade levels are describing characters. But the depth of that standard is reached differently depending upon what grade you're in. So the second-grader won't go as deep as the third-grader, but that third-grader now has prior knowledge because, oh, yeah, I remember we did that in second grade. Or, oh, yeah, we read that author. But now that teacher has selected a higher-level book that helps to advance that skill. So scaffolding is a big part of instruction, but the gradual release towards independence ensures that by the end of the year, these students are ready for third grade. And as a third-grade teacher, former third-grade teacher, I can tell you that's the biggest thing, that those students who really have a hard time in third grade are having a hard time because they have not reached that level of independence yet. And third grade, as we're going to see, is a big pinnacle. So just like first grade, their day is structured the same. But the intentionality, right, and the scaffolding is gradually released. But the teacher is now primarily focused. It's that curriculum that drives what she does, but it's the data that says how she does it, okay? So we have to, we have to use our curriculum as the path. We can't say, well, I'm We can't say, well, I'm not going to do that. But how we get there is indicated by what our students need. Okay? So teachers always need time. And so an effective teacher is maximizing time. My class, I want you to leave tired. Okay? I want your brain, Ms. Fraser, what did you do today? They fell asleep and we couldn't even leave the parking lot. I want you tired. Because from the time you walk in my room to the time that last bell rings, we are learning something in every single moment. Lining up for the bathroom, let's go over these sight words. But lining up for lunch, let's do a few multiplication facts. Oh, we're walking to the media center, let's see how many right angles we can find in the hallway. Oh, so environmental print, oh yeah, it's real.
She's joking, y'all.
Oh, yeah. We're going to, we're going to do it because spiral review opportunities are what, you want to talk about how veteran teachers get the scores they get? It's because every single moment of the day is instruction. That we don't party until the results come back. That's when we let up. And even then, I got to get you ready. So you know what? We just, I'm seeing the summer. That's when we'll party. No, we have a good time along the way. We do. But this, we teach our students, this is your job. And your paycheck is that report card. Okay? So you want, you want big bills? Let me see the As and Bs. Because this is how I'm going to get you ready for what's coming. So want to make sure that we're using our time wisely in this schedule and that we're maximizing that time. And a responsible student has been taught to respect that clock and to respect that time so that they can get the most from it. So classroom management is key so that something like this actually happens. Okay? All right. Almost there. We made it to the big whammy. Third grade, right? Third grade is the golden gate. Woo! We got to get them ready, right? It's real. It's real. Lots of tears sometimes in there because it's scary. It's, they know. At HESS, you know, third grade is the last grade on the first floor. And you might think, you might think that's not a big deal. Going up those steps is a big deal to a little person. So third grade is something serious. Students begin reading to learn and independently applying taught concepts. And that's a deep one. Because what have we been doing all along? Scaffolding, hand-holding, prompting, helping them out. But now it's, what can you do? Show me what you know. That's, that's heavy, right? So we have to get them ready for that. We have to build that stamina. Stamina is essential in third grade. Because assessments are heavy in this grade. Some we can handle. You know, we are in our circle of control. Some are outside of our circle of control. But for a lot of them, they get, this is the most they've been tested in school independently. And think, if your primary years, you've been on iPads and then you get to third grade and you're testing on a Chromebook, even logging in is a lesson in itself of how do I type? So it's these types of things that come together. But the state expectations are clear. But that's our end goal. The data is what drives me as a teacher to what tools I need to use and how I'm supposed to get there. Teachers and students have to be consistent. Children love routine. Once your schedule's set as a teacher, it doesn't change. It might maneuver, change a little bit because of picture day or, you know, maybe, you know, we're going on this field trip. But my day, your classroom, as an effective teacher, should run itself. That we do it this, this is how we do it. We do it the same way every day. I'm just changing out the content. And when kids have that and they feel that, that's when it's like, okay, it's safe here. I can learn here. I can grow here. And that's when the magic starts to happen. So systematic and direct instruction and collaborative learning and flexible learning and flipped classroom experiences, all of those things now are happening because the life of a third grader, as I get you ready for independence, I am introducing you to new tools that help you to learn. And so effective teachers are using every moment of the day in their balanced literacy blocks, in their math blocks, in their science blocks, to hold students accountable for that knowledge, but also to allow them to engage in authentic opportunities to learn from each other and from, of course, the teacher. All right. Now we get to talk about the last little thing, the fun stuff. How do we get them reading on grade level by third grade when all of those things we showed you and all of those things we talked about are still there? How are we still able to find success? And one of those ways, and the main way, is through a literacy-rich classroom. A literacy-rich classroom provides daily experiences for students to engage in meaningful and authentic literacy. You all have had experiences, some a little, some a lot, in a variety of classrooms. And you know, when you walk into a literacy-rich environment, there are certain things you see. There's a certain way that the room is arranged. And so we're going to share with you what we mean and what effectively that talks about. So the last slide here, yeah, there we go. This is an example of a typical balanced literacy setup classroom, a literacy-rich environment. So a literacy-rich environment is not only important for early literacy but supports specific content learning as well. What are things I see? Classroom libraries that include a variety of genres and text types, content posters, anchor charts, word walls, sound walls, labels on everything. Doorknob, door, shelf, desk, bookbags, folders. You think, you may laugh, but you know what those kids are doing? You know what the brain's doing every time it sees that? Whole word reading. That's what it's doing. Just like my two-year-old knows when she sees those golden arches, mama, that's McDonald's. Environmental print is so rich. And that is a key component to a literacy-rich environment. Our students need access to interesting books and materials, both in print and online. And one last little thing I want to share with you that talks about it that you'll see in this little document, you'll see in this image. Furniture placement and experiences that support small-group experiences, which allows children to converse and collaborate. When you go into a classroom, you should see what I call little nooks, areas where students can work together independently with partners, a small-group table. It could be the old-fashioned kidney table, but it also could be something that that creative teacher has put together to create a working space for them during their instructional time. And that table, let me tell you, is golden. That's the magic. You ask any teacher, they usually don't let everybody sit to it because it is special to them. That's where the magic happens. At that small table, where you're doing my T-LAC strategies, where you can really quarterback in and get to them and help them, that's where the magic happens. Sociodramatic play, especially in our primary, our three-year-old, four-year-old kindergarten, they're still able to have those areas. Inviting reading areas where children can enjoy books independently or with others. Book displays, author studies, the presence of books and experiences posted on the wall, being talked about and communicated. They talk about reading because it's a culture. A literacy-rich classroom is a feeling. That's how you get kids excited about reading. The teacher is excited. And those kids feed off of that energy. The principal should be excited about what we're reading and writing about. The teacher down the hall should be excited about what we're reading and writing about. Literacy-rich classrooms involve the whole school coming together with one goal, and that's reading on grade level. So remember, as you're making all of these awesome, awesome things, I hope we come to common themes together. One, don't compare. Right? Our students come to us ready. Parents are sending their best. Teachers are doing their best. Kids are learning their best. So please do your best for us. Okay? Thank you.
So, you know, I attribute this to Ms. Hall. We need to see the people who do the work. When you see the people who do the work, when you're in the school buildings, we see the people who do the work. We know what they deal with. We know what it's like when somebody's a little bit antsy and they just can't manage it. How the teacher, in his or her own way, manages to meet the needs of that child while we're also meeting the need of the child who is just taking off. These two people are an example of what we have in our classrooms. People are dedicated. Work, come early, stay late, work nights, weekends, to customize that experience for each child who comes in the classroom. We appreciate their efforts. And we, I think it's important for you to know that these two professionals are just two of the professionals who are out there every day. So it is sensitive to us when people don't know what they do, don't know their sacrifice and don't, and speak of them in ways that are not fair and not accurate. Any questions for them? They set the stage for tomorrow and did an awesome job of doing that. We're just, we're just so happy that they let you. Dr. Howard Hall?
Yes, I'd like to commend you on your presentation. It was awesome. I am an early childhood education major and you just took me back down memory lane. My two-year-old grandson had a homework assignment and it needs the color of a fish. But really, that homework assignment was about parental engagement. So what do you all do at HESS for parental engagement, to engage the parents?
Yes, so actually, it's really funny you said it, commend that. In my other path, working on my dissertation, parental engagement is the focus of my study. So, you know, we're a team and any good school has come in from Title I, now working in non-Title I, and now working with a plethora of culturally and linguistically diverse students. We have to set the tone that the parent is the first teacher. And we are supporting what you've already established at home. And so from the very beginning, it's calling, when you get that class list, it's calling and welcoming them to your classroom. It's creating your class on dojo and sending out messages just to say, look, have an awesome day. Look what we did today. It's being intentional in your engagement opportunities. It's seeking ways to understand the funds of knowledge that are out there in your community, understanding that your parents and your students have life experiences that can help to enrich the curriculum that you have to teach. And when parents feel like they are a part of the team, not that I know more than you or whatever and you work and you fight for that, that's when you reach that success together. That has always been. Getting the parent on my side, even when I was a baby teacher, fresh out of, out of, out of college, that's what I did. It was calling and saying, hi, welcome to third grade. I'm your child's new teacher. And starting that connection. It's also calling them for positive things, not always a negative experience. You know, sometimes parents don't answer that number because every time they pick up, it's something negative. But, and so when I started doing positive calls, they would be like, oh. You know, it would take them aback because they were so used to hearing negative things. So even something as small as that. Teachers get so creative out there. Some of them pick a pocket of students that they reach out to every week and they make sure they have an intentional connection with that student in that family. It's back-to-school nights. It's PTA meetings. It's whatever it is that your school has decided to do to reach out to parents and make them to feel a part of it. There is now a shift that research is showing that PTA meetings are great, but it's still like this dump of information. We get the most bang for our buck when parents come in and they're taught something that gives them, gives them tools that they can lead with and then implement with their children effectively. And that's how we see that growth and achievement and that too. So parental involvement is really big in what we do in parents' understanding, the plight of what we're doing, but also knowing that it's a team. It takes all of us together. And then when you think about those students who unfortunately don't have that piece, those teachers are working overtime to make up for what's not there. Because my babies at HOD, it was no, yes, I was in the middle of 37th Street giving you boxes of food. I was giving you Christmas presents. I was, I was doing that for you because I loved you and I loved what we were doing. And I know you're a child and there are developmentally things that I can't teach you anything about you read the math if you're hungry. I can't teach you anything about balanced literacy if you haven't slept all night. You know, those types of things. Knowing where your students are from and what, what they face, it helps to make a difference.
Thank you. And the last comment belongs to Ms. Hall.
Okay. Very quickly, the million-word gap. Now, I can see really diligent parents, they're going to read to their kids three to five times a week or even every day. But how in the world does anybody read to a child five times a day? That seems, you know, I'm just wondering.
Well, because reading is more than just about books. It's reading, words are all around you. It's the vocabulary that they get from television. It's signs. It's newspapers. It's comic books. It's magazines. It's all of that that comes together. So it's not just necessarily a set story, but it's a literary experience where they're being exposed to vocabulary in a new way. That's how that buck tick gets there.
This kind of says, read to them, so that, that explains.
And then you have to understand too, in a digital age with apps and websites like Epic and BookFlix and things, students now can have stories read to them throughout. And then I think of my baby's a YouTube watcher. She loves watching, you know, books on YouTube. She loves watching, read a lot of stories. So it's, it's ways to get there even if you have, because if you're working two or three jobs, it's hard. It's hard. But you find a way. And as an educator, my job is to provide you with access to the resources to help you to be there. Sometimes we have to, some people complain, oh, the parents aren't doing this. Oh, they don't know. Well, they don't know. They don't know how parents. So you have to coach them and you have to support them and mentor them in the how to be an active member of the team. Thanks.
Thank you. So we have been treated to some wonderful expertise from the field today. It was a great setup for the experience that you will have tomorrow. So for tomorrow's session, you have the infamous yellow sheet homework. If the weather permits, we will also have a field trip experience in the morning, which we will not be going very far, but we will have a field trip out to this area in the morning. If, if all works well, we'll be able to do that to really reinforce and to help bring to life some of the points that we made today about being ready for reading at the end of third grade. We will also have in the morning an opportunity to engage, as some of you requested, around long-range planning. So you'll get an update on facilities. Mrs. Kegler, do you wish to make some comments as a little preview of what we can expect tomorrow?
But no, absolutely not because it's, it's good to be in touch with them because then that sets the foundation for what we do. We know what we have to do to continue and provide them with. We know what we have to do to continue and provide them with facilities for the work that you all need to do. We all had the triple-digit weather yes, last week, but we have to make sure that those buildings are conducive for our instruction and that the buses are there on time and that the lunch is prepared and it's nutritious. So I was joking when I said I didn't want to follow them, but I need to always follow them because it's my responsibility to hold them up and make sure that they have everything they need from beginning to end. And we recognize that. When we talk about long-range planning, it's not just facilities, it's not buildings, it's operations as a whole. So that's what you're going to hear tomorrow. We're going to talk about facilities, we're going to talk about building capacity, but we're going to talk about operations and how we're planning long-term for operations in this district. Where we need to start making repairs, where we need renovations. We built a lot of new schools, but we also have to maintain the ones that we have. So we're excited. Now you have your homework assignment, you know what to go and pull up and read and be ready for us in the morning. Thank you, Dr. Kegler.
We had an exciting day today. I asked Mrs. Finch, Ms. Finch, to provide a, uh, evaluation form for you to complete. We are looking forward to getting some of that feedback so that we can, uh, make modifications. We will start in the morning at, we'll start with breakfast at eight-thirty and we will kick off at, uh, nine o'clock. We'll do a little quick check-in with you on your, um, on your homework. If you have homework to submit, that's fine. We just want to give you an opportunity to think about, um, burnout and how we can work from a policy approach to addressing that. If you have ideas, fine, if you don't, certainly we'll take that, um, after tomorrow. We will have a, the little field trip, if we can do the field trip, we're going to do that at the start of the day. It should only take about ten minutes maybe. And then we'll launch right into fiscal responsibility and stewardship. We'll have our conversation about enrollment and enrollment trends and moving from there into, um, facilities. And then we'll also have the opportunity after a little break to go back to outcomes related to third grade reading. And you will be able to see, as was mentioned earlier today, the other data that is available that speaks to the progress children have made over time, even during the pandemic. We think that's important for you to see and we think it's important for you to have the opportunity to discuss it, understand it, and then help us determine how we, as in our conversation earlier today, educate, inform, and also serve as ambassadors of the real story, who it is we're serving and what we're doing to assist them in preparing for life, um, after high school. So it's been a great day, I think. If you wish to offer any, um, comments, I'm sure Dr. Buck will, uh, will definitely facilitate that. But we certainly appreciate your attention and participation. A special thanks to our staff who are here to kind of see what we're doing today so that they are ready, uh, for tomorrow as well. Lots of great things to share and we just appreciate everyone's attention this afternoon. Dr. Buck, I give the floor.
I have, uh, I have nothing to say except, uh, tonight when your head hits a pillow, uh, take just a few seconds or a few minutes to, uh, think about what you've seen and heard today. And the fact that we are very, very fortunate to have the leadership that we have in the board and in the superintendent and in staff. But even more importantly, the leadership that we have in the classroom.
Yes, sir.
If those three teachers didn't make you have children, then you need to retire. Have a good evening.